Okay, so we got everything we're gonna get. Okay, the House meeting to order, the June regular meeting of the Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission and public hearing on proposed modifications of the Arctic Protection Regulations. A rule call. Sadie said she was gonna be absent. Mr. Platt, here. Mr. Kornick?
Here.
It's been David, he's absent in Owen, and Chairman Inkley is here. We have a court.
She's gone.
Is that it?
She's gone.
Oh, you're sorry? Okay.
Diane sent you something. I saw a glimpse of something.
Something going by. Of course, you have to go down and round over and let her. All right, let's go, let's go ahead and get started with the, with the agenda. Does anybody have any issues with the agenda? Okay, the record reflects Commissioner David has showed up. Just to point out, looking at the agenda, I had wondered if we might want to put that DQ letter on the agenda, the one that Commissioner Gosar sent to us, forwarded to us. I wasn't sure where that fits in, but we put that out the end. The letter that the DQ had sent to the planning commission.
Wasn't that just saying that they're taking another 30 days to do their review?
Is that what it was? I didn't, I just glanced at it.
Pretty sure. It was, it was just, it was basically saying, we've received this application, we've taken 30 days, statute say we can take another 30 days to review it, and we'll get back to you.
Well, then, I guess we'll.
Well, we can look at it if you'd like.
I had a question on it with respect to our new subdivision regulations and how we were interfacing with DQ. So if that's acceptable, I would just put that on for a brief discussion. It'll just be five minutes. That's how we're done. So, okay. Are there other additions, corrections, deletions, agenda? I'll take a motion to amend as amended. I will through the agenda.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I've heard that complaint, we don't have any control of that up there, do we?
No.
Okay, we'll try to speak it up and speak out, but, yeah. And then, can we turn off the air?
I don't think so.
We'll try it.
For all the remodeling in this room, you thought they'd have made it a little more audience friendly.
All right, well. The irony is that whatever you say can be heard very well by the microphone on top. You can whisper and they hear us.
Yeah, no, the folks on Zoom are getting a complete record that you are. They'll holler at us, we'll just have to proceed that way. Yeah, thanks for your patience. Well, we really should like, there's gotta be a way to turn the fan on. So.
There is, yeah. I don't know, like, it's usually the maintenance guy that turns it off.
All right, well, maybe we just request, certainly through the next four or five months, we don't need any air conditioning or heating.
We will make that request.
Let's, let's see if we can do that for our next meeting. In the future, it's a continuing source of irritation. All right, that motion passed.
We're getting broke yet.
I took a voice vote, all heard with eyes, but let's go again. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Now we're here to double up. Okay, that brings us to the minutes from the May eighth meeting. Let's just do a roundtable here. Anybody have any corrections? We'll write ahead, and Mr. Oates is taking careful notes, I'm sure.
Okay, line 121, there's a, there's a word that says about how long, that should be replaced with the word whether.
Okay.
Because the word long is afterwards again.
Sure.
Okay. In line 130 and 131, it doesn't mention what the two options are.
Good.
I couldn't remember either, so maybe add those, option one, comma.
Yeah.
Okay. Line 132, please revise to say his preference is option two.
Okay.
Just to simplify. And then, the paragraph starting in line 147, it's unclear how it's even connected to the whole discussion.
Okay.
I couldn't correct it because I didn't understand how it was connected.
Sure. Where were you, 147?
Line 147.
So, that's just a clarification to make that clearer to some people.
I did, and I was initiating the whole discussion, so. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Kornick?
Nothing other than.
But she already.
It's already there.
Okay. Mr. Platt?
It was the end of the day. Line 16, insert made between being and towards.
Good.
And that's all.
All right. Okay, that interesting. We'll, we'll have these things polished up before we'll pass, pass the grammar test. Okay, I had a couple of comments, line 51, you wrote the commissioner, commission decided not to change these points. It wasn't clear to me which points that were. All the previous ones are just immediate previous, so let's put a clarification there. In that next item, line 52 through 54, I think it would be fair to say that if we began work, I would say the commission worked through the comments. I think we started, stopped, went all the way to the end, so that would spell that he thought that there was an ongoing project there. Line 99, it's an S after systems, just a little typo. So it's advanced systems, line 102, need to be figured out at the end. Good. It's things that catch your eyes, you're trying to read them. And then, that, item 11 at line 121, maybe Commissioner Ben David mentioned that, I was confused as to what was going on there.
Yeah.
How long these systems have been tested, long enough? Yeah, yeah. So, just, just give us a clarification of that.
Yep.
Issue. Line 156, maybe Commissioner Platt corrected this differently, I'd say, said there is good work being done towards the new zoning plan. Does that work?
Also is one of those.
Yeah, pick your choice, okay, that's the, just come by. All right, further comments on the minutes? If not, motion approved as amended?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended?
Sir, second? Second. Further discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Kers, thank you. It's interesting, start at the end, Mr. Kornick, anything to share with us? Mr. Ben David?
Nothing.
Nothing? Chair Inkley? Nothing here. Okay, we have two public applications before us. The procedure will be to get a brief introduction of the application from staff, and they will invite comments from applicant, then we'll open into official public comment period. If you're going to comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Try to keep your remarks within three minutes or so, I don't think I have a problem with that, and stay on topic. If you're attending today to discuss some more general issue with us, there's an opportunity to do that at the end of the meeting. Then we'll close the public hearing and move on to discussion between staff and commission deciding what I want to do with it. So, first one up is the Barnhart zoning district amendment, a request to change a piece of zoning from agricultural to residential. Mr. Gurch?
And Mr. Chair. The applicant, the applicant, other applicants are Roy and Tammy Barnhart. The address is, I think, between U.S. Districts Drive, Southern Wild Horse Ranch area. They're requesting to change from agricultural to rural residential. Existing land use, or land use, there's a residential, there's a home on there, and it's used for residential purposes, and the current zoning is, I can say.
David?
Yes.
Could you speak up? I think so.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I hear you?
Yep. This was sent out to review, to most of the departments in the county and other organizations. We received reviews back from Rob Fitch Fisher of the Albany County Road and Bridge Department, Tracy Fletcher, Albany County Treasurer's Department. Both of those had no issues. Laramie Rivers Conservation District reviewed this and recommended minimizing disturbance of soils and quickly reseeding to avoid the spread of basis weeds. In their letters attached, Wyoming Department of Transportation reviewed this and had no comments on this project. The findings necessary for approval of this project include a number of things. They have to make the, the following findings will need to be made ultimately by the board of county commissioners. First, the applicants provided maps and surveys as required. This has been provided. When the proposed zoning district amendment generally falls, suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan, including but not limited to the Long Reach Growth Plan and Priority Growth Areas and other applicable land use plans. The future land use map depicts that this property, the land use of this property as rural residential. The Albany County Comprehensive Plan states rural residential, which is one dwelling to, per five acres to 34.9 acres. This area is for single-family dwellings with the ability to store, maintain, and adequately care for limited livestock designated for residential uses and limited agricultural operations, and for areas with limited utility capacity and onsite well and subject systems. This property is also considered a priority growth area three, or excuse me, four, priority growth area four locations tend to be more remote, be served largely sparingly by gravel roads, have low levels of public service. As a result, they have relatively low growth efficiency rating, meaning provisions of the public services of these areas is relatively expensive, and they are often in active agricultural or environmentally sensitive areas. Conservation and protection of agricultural operations, wildlife habitat, and sensitive lands is a high priority and priority growth area four. Low-density residential uses are encouraged. Another finding is that the applicant has demonstrated that proposed zoning district amendments comply with the following criteria. Capability with surrounding properties. The Wild Horse Ranch area has been developed for larger lot residential uses. Much of the, this area is 40-acre lots. West of this property, there are a number of lot zone rural residential with sizes ranging from a little over an acre to 20 acres. In addition, there are 40 lots around and an acre in size along the south side of the Lake Hattie. Change of designing this property to rural residential is compatible with uses in the area. And then, another impact to discuss is consistent patterns with development, or consistent patterns of development. This area has been developed to allow large tract residential uses. The proposal would allow more density, but they're not changing existing development pattern of the area. Other impacts, economic impacts, natural, environmental, resource impacts, all been addressed by the applicant. Cultural resource impacts, to our knowledge, no cultural resources are known on this property. Road network impacts, additional traffic will be likely have, or will likely have minimal impacts, existing road network, existing road network should easily accommodate the increase of traffic if the proposal is approved. Impacts of public services, utilities, and public facilities. There's power currently to the property. Volunteer fire department will service property in the rural, fire station is approximately eight miles from the property. And then notice was provided as required. Staff analysis, staff finds the applicant has demonstrated that the findings necessary for approval have been satisfied. Some comments that support this conclusion include the following. Closed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Comprehensive Plan. Proposal to change this partial from agricultural to rural residential is supported by the future land use map, which shows this area's future land use as rural residential. This area has already been divided into large lots for residential purposes. At the time this area was subdivided, its use for agricultural purposes transitioned to residential uses. Four dense patterns of development exist in this area, and the zoning district amendment does not pose any significant impacts to the surrounding area and is consistent with neighboring uses. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings, findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specific, or the specified impacts and are, the same are, and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law the applicant's proceeding in accordance with and in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Staff recommended nation is to approve the Barnhart zoning district amendment, adopting and incorporating staff analysis findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in the staff report. I would be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Would, would moving the podium be helpful? Can you, can you guys hear him at all?
Oh, yeah, I can hear him.
Okay, good. All right, let's start out again, questions for staff?
I'm sure this is relevant, but do they have covenants out there that would?
There are covenants in the Wild Horse Ranch area. I'm not sure if this property's covered covenants or not.
It's a nature way.
Nature way, yeah.
I just wondered if there was a covenant that would prevent this, and if we have anything to say about that at all, I don't know.
Yeah, we typically don't include private covenants in our decision review.
So the nature way would have to take action itself.
Right, right.
If there was a violation of the covenants.
I mean, it's my understanding that, that if they did do a subdivision, that the lots would have to be at least 10 acres in size. Well, I don't have a copy of their covenants in front of me, so I don't.
Okay, but they could take action if they want.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, and then the thing about us being okay with five acres, not 20, if we change the designation. Those are my only questions.
Just a clarification on that, the approval of a rural residential, it's five acre minimum average lot size, two acre minimum lot size, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just to.
Oh, two acres.
Kind of elaborate on what Commissioner Kornick was saying, that the most extreme would be seven two-acre lots and one 26-acre lot if I did math right.
Yes.
Okay.
That would be the densest development by right in a rural residential zoning. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
No, that's, that was all I had.
Yeah, I want to clear on what is being specifically proposed. Are they proposing to split 40 acres into two 20-acre lots, or are they asking to take the whole lot and make it into two acre lots?
This application is specifically just to change the zone.
Just the zoning, without any plan?
Correct. Well, so, in their, in their application, they did mention they would like to split it into two lots, two 20-acre lots. But after the zone is, you know, zoning is changed, then it can be what Mr. Inkley says.
We did not get a response from the wildlife, from Game and Fish, did we?
No, we did not.
Because Lake Hattie, that earlier is living, wintering habitat for hornbill, closer to the lake, also elk.
Correct.
It would have been nice to hear from Game and Fish what their thoughts about it.
They were provided the application, but we didn't hear response, so. From my experience, I mean, I know that there's been some change in personnel there, but from my experience, they typically will, they don't respond to the zoning changes. But when, if there's a subdivision application, they would provide a response, but, like I said, at one point, they were doing that consistently, but then there's been change in personnel, and I think maybe variety has shifted or something.
Yeah, so my concern will be wildlife habitat, especially winter habitat.
Other, other questions? And we'll have a chance to hear from the applicant directly in terms of what, what their thoughts are, although I would reiterate what Mr. Kers said, application for us is zoning change, full stop. That's, I don't have anything. Got a few things, some are just kind of points of clarification on the, on the staff report. You indicated that all, the lots in the area are all identified as residential rural or residential vacant. Are there any of those lots in that larger area that are taxed as ag?
I didn't look at all of the lots, so I guess I can't answer that.
How far did your statement here go?
For the immediate vicinity.
Like adjacent lots?
Yeah. I mean, so, what, yeah, I guess I can't really speak to this answer, but, yeah.
I mean, this distinction is something that's kind of runs through our zoning, is it started as tax classifications, then we've drifted from that into more, I think, legitimate zoning. But the tax, people sometimes get confused that their tax status is their zone. That's not the case, so.
Right.
That's why I was interested in how that whole thing was working. So the conservation district comments, I think you characterized as basically premature, that's, sounds right to me in terms of if you're going to develop this.
Right, right.
Yeah, and, yeah. The Game and Fish comments, I think Commissioner Ben David brings up a good point, and perhaps in the future, we should, we should coax Game and Fish a bit, because the implications are huge for them, and to be presented with, we have zoned this for small lots. What do you think? Well, too late.
Yeah.
So it might be good if, if we, in that relationship, pointed out to them that we would like their comments on these zoning changes.
I can reach out, I haven't. Have you got any responses from them for anything lately?
Not lately.
Maybe I'll reach out just to see if I can touch base with the folks in the county protection program or whatever.
Yeah, I don't know, Lauren is still doing that job.
Who?
Lauren, Lauren Tho. She was the one, did all that, communication was pretty full.
There was a gentleman I talked to that was over the program the last time I talked to them.
You included a map with, with yellow dots on it that are numbered, and perhaps I missed something. What, what are those numbered dots?
Addresses points. Oh, those are addresses? Yes.
Okay, so, so we could treat those as a, of existing residence, basically?
Yes, correct.
That's what I was guessing, there's no, there's no key to the numbers. Your one was just, here are residences.
Yeah, he just snipped it from his map, he just took us like a screenshot.
Okay, yeah.
The maps at the end should have the key to tell you what everything is.
Okay.
Yeah, this was just, yeah.
Oh, no, the more information, the earlier the better. In fact, I meant to, to thank you guys for the staff reports that give us a little quick summary right at the start, so we can get on the right page and don't have to wait, wait out into it to get the details, so, good for that. You stated, they are not changing the existing development pattern. What's, what's your notion of the development pattern that they're not changing?
So, once this was turned into basically a large residential subdivision, there's no change in, in the sense that it will be anything else but residential, or just, this would allow for a little more density, which, if you look at the, the properties to the left or to the, to the west or whatever, those are also dense, denser properties, and so pattern of them isn't changed from what exists out there now.
So, and I think we've had this discussion before, your, your concept is the whole Wild Horse development is residential now.
Yes.
And that's what you're consistent with.
Right, there's no economic use of agricultural, I mean, you can't do agricultural stuff out there economically in this. Not enough food for cattle, there's not, you know, it has to be in market area.
Yeah. The tax status is not sensitive to efficiency, but I agree with your point. Okay, then we see an applicant response, a notion that what they're thinking of is two lots, and as we agreed, that's not entirely relevant. I also liked in the staff report that, that we're now seeing an affirmative statement from staff. In the Olson report, for example, you affirmatively stated that this area can be served adequately by utilities and public services. You didn't do that in this one, but I, I like that, as we've discussed many times, the staff constantly acknowledging that they covered it, jealous what you thought of it. Again, I appreciate the way that, that worked. Then I'd just like to have a, a short discussion here to indulge me on the comprehensive plan. When I look at the comp plan and figure five, 310, which you referred to, when sees rural residential scattered out all across the county, tiny little dots here and there, I'm kind of skeptical that those were any affirmative, this is a place for a subdivision. This looks to be more like it was simply an inventory. Can you give us any insights on how map 310 came to be, and to what extent is it a plan, and to what extent is it simply an inventory of existing use?
Right, so, there is an existing land use map previous to this, and the map that we're, that 310 is actually future land use map, so it should be what they are, what we're expecting in the future to happen. Now, how that was created, I was not part of that process. I mean, this, this document was, was approved probably two or three months after I moved here. So I'm not, I don't have any insider information about how that map was created, so I, I don't have much to tell you, I guess, on that.
Just, the way you said that is, is telling, however, this was what was expected to happen, or this is what?
Yes.
We wanted to have happen, and I'm again trying to make this distinction between planning and inventory.
Future land use map is what we want to have happen.
So, so I guess that I would offer that map 310 probably isn't really very faithful to that notion, despite it being represented as a future land use map, and in the text that goes with it, we are encouraged in these areas to quote, promote very low-density housing for residential development proposals that are adjacent to agricultural use. So, I guess I'm just pointing out that my reading of the comprehensive plan, one could also argue consistency with the comprehensive plan to deny this permit as, as good to, to bring it forward.
I wouldn't disagree.
Okay, unless there was something special about that area right around Lake Hattie, which, which isn't like.
Right.
A place that just happens to have a house on it. Okay, so just, that was my only comment for the staff report. Thank you for that. Other business take up with Mr. Gurch, Mr. Ayers? Okay, then let's have the applicant come and tell us what you think, and we'll move on from there. You?
Your man. Hi. My name is Roy Barnhart, and what do you got questions, sir? I couldn't hear everything you're saying, sorry.
If we hear, if we get some.
Too many power tools over the years.
That's fine, it doesn't hurt your twice.
So, what you got?
Well, just want to tell us what you're, what you're up to, what's your proposal, why do you want to do this?
Well, we're just wanting to split the property in half, and we're wanting to build another house there, and we've talked with the covenant on the ranch several times about it, and they're good with splitting the property as long as it's no less than 10-acre lots.
So, so do you have a homeowners association when you say you've talked to them? Who does that, you talk to?
The guys on the board for the covenant, for the ranch.
And the covenant is 10 acres minimum?
Yeah. First, we won't split ours down that small, because we don't get a. First, we won't split ours down that small because we don't get a, want to keep as much property as we can around, but.
What what's what's your timeframe issue? One of the items of discussion that you'll hear from me is is I don't think our present zoning really accommodates what we're trying to do here. And that's that's true of a lot of our zoning. So tell me, are you, are you, are you wanting to get this done in the next two weeks or in 10 years? What's your?
Well, not 10 years. Ain't going to be any good.
Okay.
Hopefully by next year, maybe, if possible.
That's 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 helpful. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Barnard?
I have a question about fencing.
Fencing?
Yes. Are you familiar with the new Albany County regulations for fencing?
Well, all I know is is the height for the antelope and stuff to go under. So I know my daughter next door does. They just had their property fenced. You know, their 40 acres because they have their own horses. And but, you know, we talked, the ranch is fine with that, as long as you let them know and, you know, get a permit or whatever. But anybody that wants to fence their property in on the Wild Horse Ranch can.
Okay, thank you.
So you're you'll maintain residence on the one half and then you'll off the other half for sale. That's the idea. And you've got a buyer lined up for the other half.
Yeah.
Just curious, again, we're not we're not doing a subdivision here, we're just doing zoning. That's all I had.
And there's nothing you can grow there. And you know, you guys know what it's like, pretty much desert, but.
Yeah.
And it, you know, it's a nice little area right there by the lake. It's already several houses and stuff around.
Good. Well, thank you. If we got no other questions, maybe something else will come up. All right, then let's invite public comment. I would note that we had one comment in writing. Had you seen that, Mr. Barnard? We had a written comment. Let's see. Can you remember who that was?
From Zach and Robin Cowan. Cody?
Cowan.
At Forty Twin Buttes. Your neighbors at Forty Twin Buttes Drive.
What's that?
Your neighbors at Forty Twin Buttes Vista's Drive made a comment on this. No.
Well, they're they're, since you're here, maybe you could respond to that since you've got the podium. The comment was basically, we bought our place thinking we were on a 40 acre zoning and we'd like to keep it that way. And so please deny the request if I could.
Yeah, we don't know anything about it.
Okay.
Never heard from anybody. But I mean, they've got their 40 acres, so.
Right.
They actually have 80 acres. Zach Cowie actually owns 80 acres.
All those got the side here.
That's got a little corner there.
Okay, I just thought I'd let you know that that was the comment we've had so far. All right.
And they don't live there, I think, anywhere in Colorado.
I think that probably is correct. Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see, anybody else want to talk to us about this particular application?
Sure.
Give us your name and address, please.
The more subtle one.
My name is Stuart Schmidt. I live at 78 Twin Buttes Vista's Drive, directly across from Roy and Tammy. Roy and Tammy are my friends. This is a difficult thing to do, but I feel strongly about it. And so I'm here to have my voice heard. I I purchased, I was the very first person to purchase property on Wild Horse Ranch, which was not Wild Horse Ranch at that time. It was Lake Hattie Vista's. It was planned to be 80 acres throughout the whole property. There was no wild horse, anything involved. It got sold again. Then it inevitably ended up Wild Horse Ranch. Wild Horse Ranch, as far as I know, is 40 acre parcels. I bought, assuming 80 acre parcels. So did Zach Cowie. So did another person next to me, which is since sold. I I bought 80 acres. I I love Roy and Tammy. I just, you know, I don't want any more people over there. You know, we're for 40 acres and there's a reason for that. And it keeps getting brought up about west of the property. This property is on a mile square section that is that is cut into 40 acre sections. It is bordered by state property and by BLM. The impact, you know, you can't go by the impact. And the people that are paying rural residential down the road are 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 acre lots that are right on Lake Hattie waterfront property. Complete different animal. And as your question to the antelope, I've owned this property for 21 years. The decline in antelope is drastic from our presence. So like I said, I it's, you know, I hope they're still my friends after this, but we'll see.
I'll put it out the risk of threatening some of my study animals. We've had raccoons that used Lake Hattie extensively. I've been there many times. My comment about Bogomont was informed. I've seen the changes.
Yes, yes, there's been a lot of changes, so there's impact. I mean, ourselves have impacted it by just basically living there. 40 acre parcels. The only thing this benefits is Roy. Doesn't benefit me any.
My land, Stuart.
Doesn't help me.
Right, got your 80 acres.
I appreciate.
So it sets a precedent. So I can break mine down to five acres because I'm not on Wild Horse Ranch. I'm private. I'm private property. I don't have to go by their covenants, which, in my opinion, are run loosey goosey. Wild Horse Ranch, oh, you can have three property, you can have three buildings, you can have this, you can have that. Can you? Can you not? That's Wild Horse Ranch. That's covenants. I'm not bound by them because of the property was sold afterwards. He's mad at me. You know what I mean? I apologize to Roy and Tammy, but you know what I mean? We bought 80. Now it's down to 40. My property too.
It is indeed. We should configure our zoning to protect everyone's property values. That's the balance.
It doesn't, it doesn't add any value to the community at all. None. And like I said, they're comparing apples to oranges. Those people down there have the acre lots. Completely different system. Completely different. Okay, this sets a precedent. If this happens, then I can cut mine into five acres because I'm not bound by them because of this precedent. Am I wrong?
You are. Each one comes to us as an individual project. It hasn't been evaluated on its individual merits. But certainly, there is an effect of if this changes, that that changes the complexion of it ever. It makes it easier to change further, I can argue for that. But anyway, we're not here to argue that point at this point. Thank you for your comments. I think we understand your position. And basically, as echoed by the written comments. Anyone else? Please, name and address.
My name is Liston Robertson, 50 Calistoga Drive. I guess my concern is just more if Diana was talking, we're down to 10 acre lots. You could go down to 10, 10 acre lots, four 10 acre lots. That would be my biggest concern. And I bought our 40 acres to keep 40 acres spaced out from everybody, you know, so it doesn't get congestioned. So if you got four lots, you do it down to 10 acre lots, now you got instead of four houses, you got 16 houses, which is not what I bought my property for. So that's pretty much how I am.
You would like us to see this deny this application, just to be clear?
Yes, if it opens a Pandora's box where, okay, they do 20, then next people, okay, they can do 10 acres. And then you were talking five acres. So then all of a sudden, it becomes a huge community of five acre lots, which if that's the case, then I'll be selling them. I'll be dividing mine up so and so. That should, I'll be out of there.
Just just so we're clear on the numbers, the the application is to.
It's for 20.
Vote it? No, it is not. It is to do it.
In half.
Zoning change to rural residential. Now, there are these covenants.
To 20 acre lots, right?
No.
I thought you might have invited it.
The applicant has suggested that's what they may do with it. That is not part of this decision. We are simply looking at a zoning change, which would then allow the owner, whether it's the owner that's before us tonight or the owner of tomorrow or 10 years from now, what that would allow them is to subdivide into five acre lots.
Two acres.
They don't want size two acres, average lot size five acres.
So we can go down to two acre lots.
It could, it could. No, I'm not, I'm not trying to put words to Mr. Burkhardt's mouth. That's the decision that is before us and that's what the application. Okay, right. Whatever that would do.
Right. So so they're just doing it to go to rural, to residential?
We don't have any control over what they do with the zoning they have asked for. Now, Mr. Burkhardt Sheddith says that his plan is to go to two 20 acre lots. Again, that's interesting, but really not immediately germane to our decision. We're being asked to zone it rural residential, which would allow.
To divide.
To do some divide much more finely than 20 acres. Okay, just so we're all clear on that.
All right.
Got it. Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on the proposal to change the zoning of this piece of property for agricultural rural residential? Please.
Hi, my name is Randy Donekic, 223 Lake Hattie Road. Excuse my voice. My mom's had a property out there since 2006. And her taxes, it's just gone up substantially. She's on a fixed income. So the way I see it, more houses they put out there to higher the taxes are going naturally. And it's a beautiful place and just hate to end up seeing like one of the places in Denver, trailer park or something like that. So I'd just like to keep the beauty and keep it the way it was designed originally in the 80s.
Thank you. Who else? And we have no one online, am I understanding that correctly, Mr. Gertz? I don't see anybody on the screen, but it's that I. All right, going once, going twice. Further comments on the application to change zoning? Is there a motion to close public comment?
I approve the close public comments.
For a second. Further discussion of that, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, motion carries. Okay, so. What do we want to do with this? Who else want to start? I've got my thoughts.
Split. My inclination is to recommend approving this.
Further discussion, I mean.
Well, I'll just, just note, I'm not arguing my case, but that's my inclination. You know, as you alluded to earlier, there's a balance between conflicting wants and desires, property rights.
I'm here.
You speak the hook book, right? Yeah. There are conflicts between your property rights that you might want. And things do change.
My main concern is wildlife, winter habitat. And I again, our goal is to restrict development into rural agricultural areas of the county in order to maintain wildlife habitat and other things. And so I I I understand the proponent or the applicant's interest in splitting in two. But again, this is not what we're voting on. If we were voting on this one case, it would maybe be a different story. But we are, by changing the zoning of this household, we are basically opening the floodgates. So I I would be inclined to oppose. I wonder, and that's a question for Mr. Gertz, if if is there any other way to help with a second building, a second building on the property?
Mr. Chair, this is David. They, I mean, we do have adopted regulations for accessory dwelling units. That is, that's very limited if they're looking at building a full new house on the property. They probably won't be able to do it. It's limited to 1,200 square feet. And you know, the other limitations that are on there. So there is that. Honestly, there are exemptions that are available, such as a family exemption, but they would have to hold the property for at least 10 years. And then they wouldn't be able to sell a property that they sold or that they carve off for another five years, which I'm not sure how long they plan the property. I don't think it's been that long. Those are the only things I could think of off the top of my head, so.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got some thoughts on that, but Mr. Kornick, do you want to add sort of a thought here? And we'll go back around.
I think the wildlife question is an important one. If we were to table this and try harder to get some input from game and fish, would that be a possibility?
I think that's one of our options, isn't it? Mr. Gertz, is that?
I mean, I can ask. They don't have to give it to me, but yeah.
Tabling is an option, though, I guess.
Absolutely, yes.
I mean, if it's a critical habitat, maybe they could be encouraged to weigh in. It sounds like those of you that are paying attention have noticed impacts already.
Oh, yeah.
And once again, I wish we had a narrower category, you know? They're not asking us for five acre lots, but that's what we have to give them the option to do because that's the only category that we have.
Without disagreeing, Diana, I think there's impacts everywhere, not just with Chicago, everywhere in the county.
Yeah, but that's the problem.
Right, except Lake Hattie has water. And other places in the county are not as critical because of the water. So so I'm in a business.
One step at a time. Yeah, I'm interested that I've, from several of you, heard that the step is too big. And that's exactly where my thoughts are going. That's why I asked Mr. Burkhardt what his plans were. And this thing to me is quite reminiscent of a project that came before this commission when I first started, that I'm sure you'll remember, where a gentleman, Wild Horse, had a 40 acre lot. He wanted to build a home for his, it seemed like it was a family thing. I don't remember the details, but Mr. Gertz, you remember the?
I don't remember the details.
But you remember the plot I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
And so he came to the planning office and the answer was much the same as you just heard, Mr. Gertz, that the only way to allow a second residence on a lot was to subdivide. So then we had a situation very like this, where the proponent said, well, I really don't want to build a whole bunch of houses. I voted against it at the time purely in the spirit of we don't have a middle road. Now, Mr. Wilson's been working for us, as we've talked about before, on some more granular divisions of some of our zoning. And it feels to me like we keep coming upon this issue of we would like to be able to slice things a little finer in the case of agricultural rural residential, which is the first step into residential. It's a huge step. It's from 35 acres to two, if you take the minimum lot size. So here's here's my question for discussion. Would it, what's our timeline? Is it feasible to think of this in terms of, let's put it on hold and try to find a way to carve out a smaller step? Is that in the works? Is that something that that we can't promise that, of course, but but my reluctance to approve this is, is the step is too large. If it were what the proponent has said, 20 acres, I'd be much more sympathetic to it. The impact would be that much less. We're not, we can't negotiate here, but but talk to me about what what would that look like? Is is that in the cards within the the near future to to find one or more steps between two acres and 35?
So, yeah, I mean, it's in the works. I mean, I I can't really predict how long it's going to take because we'll we'll have have what we're working on in the office coming to you. And then, I mean, we've done this before and it's taken, you know, a year to to do that. If 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 there was direction to just look at at this specific situation, maybe just carve up rural, I mean, not this situation specifically, but like this situation generally where we're getting these applications for something in Wild Horse Ranch or another one of these large tract subdivisions. I mean, we could look at just rural residential and maybe split that up into some other options, which maybe that would be quicker if that. um, which maybe that would be quicker if, if that's what you'd like us to do. We could, we could come up with something and run that through much quicker, obviously. Again, I don't, I don't know what the timeline would be on that, but that would be, wouldn't be super hard to put in front of you if we're just looking at that specific situation or that, yeah.
Zoning category.
Category, right.
Making subcategories.
I think we should do that.
I think that would be really helpful. Really helpful.
And we can help in the discussion if needed.
Okay, so again, we're not, we're not negotiating on this application, but just knowing what the possibilities are out there. Should we want to pursue that one? Uh, we would either table this indefinitely or, or deny it and, and invite Mr. Burkhardt to come back later. Or Mr. Barnhart. Barnhart, I'm sorry. I've got too many, too many bees out there. Barnhart. Alright, well, that was my thought, that's interesting to me that this is, there's a convergence of interest here in providing a, a, a compromise. So, anyway, that, that's where I am and, and my, I am very sympathetic to the letter we received and to the comments we've heard here tonight and, and would just echo what some of the public has commented, that zoning works both ways, it's, it's to protect a person, like, like most regulations, there's to protect folks from those who want to change the situation. Where we're, we're, you're not allowed to murder me because that's against the law. I have a thing I, I want to consolidate, I built my life around, somebody wants to change that, status quo, has a certain amount of inertia. Now, it comes both ways, people bought land that subsequently was found to be in the Arctic Protection Zone and felt cramped by that change in zoning, so it can go either way. But in this case, I am sympathetic to those who bought into the wide open spaces that Albany County and Wyoming provide. And, and I, I am inclined to try to honor that expectation to the extent that, that we can. So, anyway, that's where I am on it. Other, other thoughts and then we'll need a motion to proceed.
I have a question. Do I have to comment?
Alright, yeah, alright, we're outside, build a comment, but quickly, sure.
So, if, let's just say if you change the zoning, so would you start off at 20 acres? And then maybe the next time, the next zoning would go down to 10?
No. So, he can do what, he can bring it down to 2 acres?
No.
No, no, no.
No, no idea, no idea, there's not.
We haven't thought about it yet.
Okay.
So, there's no precedent, there's no, and again, we're just talking amongst ourselves as to, as to this issue that we continue to have. We would like there to be some intermediate ground.
Just to have like a minimum.
So, it's all done minimums, the 35 acres is the minimum for ag. 5 acre min- average minimum, 2 acre minimum for rural residential, there's a small lot residential, there's an urban residential. So, we currently have four residential zonings, each of which is defined by a series of.
And we would like to add the more categories, yeah, and we're talking about.
Right, instead of just having what you guys have.
Instead of having to step from 35 down to 2.
Yeah, 2. Yeah, we can miss the whole, that's a, that's what I was asking about.
That's what we're contemplating.
Because they were asking for 20 acre, to divide in the twenties.
And we've had previous applicants with a similar situation. Alright, so, you're, you're thinking correctly.
We haven't touched it yet.
Okay, so, where are we? Other thoughts, questions, bring this one to a, to a vote. Our options are to approve it, table it, approve with conditions, table it, deny it. It, Mr. Gerch, if we were to want to pursue, as it sounds like there's sympathy for, a subdivision of our zoning regulations, what would be the appropriate way to discuss this one? Denial or tabling?
Um, so the problem with, with, uh, okay, so the applicant is applied for rural residential at this point, right? So, that's what the application is for. Um, if we go and we change our rules.
They'll have to reapply.
They would have to reapply anyways, um, for that, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Given this, I, uh, would vote to deny.
And on the basis of? If we're, if we're going to deny an application, we have to articulate the reasons why at, at some level. Now, the meeting has done that, but I can be able to wrap some words around that.
Yes. Uh, I would vote to deny this application, given the fact that it can open dense development in a region that is critical wildlife habitat.
Okay.
And most of the, uh, adjacent properties are post owners, property owners, sorry.
Okay, so, motion to, motion is to deny the application, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, is there further discussion of that motion? Mr. Platt, would you like to weigh in further?
Uh, no.
Alright, I'm satisfied that we've discussed it. Sandy is absent, Mr. Platt, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Mr. Kornick?
Yes.
It's been David?
Yes.
And Clea votes yes, the motion carries, the application is denied.
I do think we should prioritize different categories, because this has happened repeatedly.
Yes.
And 20 acres would be fine, good, and restricted to that.
Okay, so the, the, the application is taken care of, we have direction to staff to explore.
Can I just?
Have a subdivision.
Please, for the audiences, so, so you're recommending denial, it will still go to the Board of County Commissioners, um, and they will have the opportunity to have a public hearing and then weigh their recommendation and make a decision on that. So, so this is, the process is not complete at this point, unless there's a request to pull the application or something like that. But at this point, we'll still go to the Board of County Commissioners, um, and, and they'll have an opportunity to, they'll make the decision, so.
Alright, so, so, yeah, that's probably unfair to press to characterize that as having been denied. We recommend denial to the Board of County Commissioners. Done?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, anyone who was here for that application is welcome to leave, uh, or you can stay for the rest of the circus if you like. Thank you for taking the time to, to weigh in, we, we much appreciate public comment. Alright, next up is the Olson zoning district amendment. Who's going to give us the staff report?
That would be me. Alright, um, the applicants, the applicants are Eugene and Cindy Olson. Um, this is, their property is at 375 South Kiowa Street. Um, property size is 3.4 acres. Existing land use is residential, there's a home and other structures on the property. Current zoning is small lot residential. Surrounding land uses, the properties to the north, east and west are residential properties. One lot to the south is owned by the county and has a historical structure from the Fort Sanders on it, and the other lot is a commercial property. Um, the request is to change zoning from small lot residential to urban residential. Um, this was submitted to review, um, to a number of folks. We received reviews back from the assessors office, who had no issues. Albany County Road, Road and Bridge Department, Rob Fisher Superintendent commented that South Kiowa Street is a deeded county right of way, but is not a county road, it is not maintained by the county Road and Bridge Department. Um, Albany County Treasurer's Office had no issues with this, and Laramie Reverse Conservation District provided pretty much the same comments on this one as the last one. Um, just minimize disturbance of soil and quickly receding, um, to avoid spread of invasive species. Uh, and then they have the letters attached. South Laramie Water and Sewer District, um, commented, "The district has a water line in South Kiowa Street and the district has a capacity to supply water for this proposed subdivision." Which, this is not subdivision, this is, the zoning changed, but, um, um, Laramie Department of Transportation, Taylor McCourt looked at this, had no comments, and the City of Laramie, um, did review this and had no comments. So, finding is necessary for approval, um, they provided the required surveys and site plans. The proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Conference of Plan. Just my response to that is, the property is within priority growth area two. Um, priority growth areas two's are typically the, um, water sewer districts, water and/or sewer districts. The plan says priority growth areas two's represent a second ring of development that includes logical, cost-effective areas for Albany County to grow. Primary residential uses are envisioned in the associated priority growth area two locations. Laramie growth area plan, this area is designated state residential. Primary uses recommended for the designation are detached single-family dwellings with a suggested density of one dwelling per 2 to 5 acres. Um, the applicant has demonstrated that the proposed zoning district complies with the following criteria, patrolling with center surrounding properties. This area includes a mix of uses, includes residential, non-residential uses. Much of the property to the south, South Kiowa Street is commercial uses. West of Fort Sanders Road, which is very close to where this is, is all industrial. The area to the north, um, of South Kiowa Street are all residential. I should have added in there that there's some, or agricultural piece that's close to there, just to get all of the zones included. Um, but this is a very mixed-use area, so there's a lot of stuff going on here, so. Lot sizes range from less than a quarter of an acre in size to 5 acres in size, um, on that, that north side of South Kiowa Street. Um, consistent patterns of development. The area includes small, single-family residential lots, commercial uses, industrial uses. Proposal is consistent with the density of the developed neighborhood resi- residential lots. Existing pattern of development will not be impacted by this proposal. I would add that this could be considered infill, since it's already in an area that's been kind of developed and they're just cutting a lot in half. Economic impacts, um, be anything, any impacts there would be minimal. Uh, natural resource impacts, I mean, those, those have been done a long time ago, uh, for the most part, other than if they're putting in a wastewater system, they'll need to get that permitted properly. Cultural resource impacts, there is that, you know, that it is in the Fort Sanders area, or, um, where the old fort was. Um, but honestly, the impacts have, have already occurred there. Road network impacts, some additional traffic will be likely, um, but they'll have minimum impacts on the existing road network. Impacts to public services, utilities and public facilities. Water service exists in the area, and that's, it's in the water, the South Laramie Water and Sewer District. Um, and electrical service exists as well. The Albany County Fire District Number One Station is about a half mile from the property. Property is also served by the Albany County Sheriff's Office. Um, and this area can be served adequately by, or utilities and public services. Notice was provided properly. So, this is my brief analysis, the proposed zoning district amendment generally follows the suggestions of the Albany County Conference of Plan. This area is in priority growth area two and is a logical, cost-effective area for further development. Um, I will note that the, the growth plan does call for the 2 to 5 acre lot size. But I guess I would just counter with this area has already been developed in a manner that's less than that, and so this would be consistent with what, what the area already, what's already existing in the surrounding area. South of Laramie, Water and Sewer District can provide water to the property. Um, the zoning district amendment does not pose any significant impacts to the surrounding area, is consistent with the neighboring uses. The potential increase in density that'll, that would allow it, be allowed if urban residential zoning is approved is consistent with the area. Most lots along the north side of Kiowa are 1 acre or less in size. Finds a, finds a fact, finds necessary for approval, the applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution. Um, and I would, if you have any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Gerch? Did you go first? Okay, I'll, I'll start with a few, Mr. Gerch, I'll just plant, I got some.
Forgot about that. When I took a look at the map, it looks to me that actually it's ranchet for in the growth area plan and not state residential. And I, I'm just noting that, uh, it doesn't change how I feel about this at all. Um, and as an aside, when I was looking at the website for planning, I couldn't find a full-scale sized map of the growth area plan, and I don't know if there's one there I just missed. Or if it's not there, if it's not there, I think Paul would be there.
Where's, where were you looking?
At our website.
Okay. It's in the, it's in the actual growth plan, the full-size map is, or, I mean, it's, there's not, it's 11 by 17.
Right. Uh, well, I, I couldn't find it there either.
Okay.
So, wanted you to know that.
Okay.
And, uh, maybe I didn't find my place.
We can pull the map out and just put it as a separate link, maybe that would be helpful.
Well, I think it'd be great to include all the maps, so it's, you're fine.
Okay.
And again, maybe I missed it somewhere, but I don't think it did.
Okay.
Sounds good. And, yeah, that was, that was just me making that comment.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Williams, have you got that at your fingertips? You're pretty handy.
The map?
The map, the growth area map?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I, well, I've got a few thoughts here, maybe it would be useful for us to look at that. So, just so I understand, the lot size implications of this, the current zoning is small lot residential.
Correct.
2 acre minimum lot size, if we move to urban residential with central water its way.
Correct.
And they will have central water.
Correct.
Individual sewer. Okay. There was a little confusion on, uh, city Laramie comments. At, at the end, it says, "We had comments, but then there weren't any," and what was, did it ring any bells? I think it's the very end that said, "In your attachment for," well, attachment for was blank, but then there was an attachment that said, "Yes," to the city of Laramie comments. I, I guess if you tell me that the answer was no, but put it down there at the bottom somewhere that they had all the different city departments listed and it said, "Assistant City Manager, yes, on comments."
It just said comments. And then it says planning, planning advisory comments. These advisory comments cannot be required, I mean, it doesn't, there's no... I think maybe the no comments under that is supposed to be under assistant, assistant manager? I don't, I don't, this is what they provided, so.
Okay, so when it's, when it acted like there was comments, I just wondered if they got lost or something.
Nope, this is what they provided, so.
Like it's under item 13, Assistant City Manager, it says, "Comments."
Right.
Everybody else said, "No comments."
Right.
Okay, I don't know, alright, just want to make sure I didn't miss something. And that's all I had for questions for you guys. Uh, so what do we got here on the map, on the screen? Where are we?
See my mouse?
I cannot, can you blow up the relevant area?
Is there, uh, here?
Yeah, that's it, it's, it's north of the green area, maybe south of the green area.
South of the green area.
Well, yes. What we're looking at. Between the green area and the red area.
Okay, so it's like right off the W in highway? Okay, and that, that kind of yellowish shading, is there estate?
That's ranchet.
That's ranchet, and the, where did, where did estate residential come from?
Well, I'm thinking that it's hard to see the colors.
If I, I might have.
Put it down.
Okay.
Please look at that.
Ranchet.
Well, yeah.
Where's ranchet?
Yeah, sorry, if I put estate, I was incorrect.
And, and what was their criteria for ranchets?
Larger.
I assume it's larger, just out of curiosity, so we got our ducks in a row.
Damn. I think I, I'm pretty sure I put at least the, should have that down right, the 2 to 5.
2 to 5.
Yeah, so 2 to 5. Yeah, sorry, I just, I put the right density, I just put the wrong label.
Okay, now, so let's go back to the map, what were they thinking when they? Why didn't have that all commercial or something?
I don't know. I know that we had everything south of there, we talked to them about having that all commercial or whatever, but.
And, and what's the, the relatives? And that's commercial. Okay.
But, yeah, I, I just made my comment because I saw the color difference.
Yeah.
It actually doesn't have anything to do with how I viewed the application, because I think it's a completely improper use.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm supportive of the application, but I, I think it's, we, we we should remain. we should remain cognizant of all the effort here and be aware of what we're doing with respect to this, but. Okay, so though I'm, I'm satisfied that I understand enough of how it fits into the growth plan.
Can we ask a question about uh, the map? Is the railroad tracks plotted correctly?
The railroad tracks? They, they were using existing data. I don't know, like, how current the data is and how accurate there are, I guess I can't speak to that.
Because there's a railroad track right by the cement plant along Fort Sanders Road.
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
No, you already know my opinion about this.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, well, no, we will invite you to articulate that for the record here in a moment. Do we have the applicant here today? Please, uh.
If you'd like to offer any, any supporting comments of what are you thinking, and then if there are any questions for you, if you'd stand up for questions, that would be appreciated.
Jean Olson, live three seventy-five South Kaowa Street. Um, when we purchased that property back thirty-four years ago, there was our house and two junky trailer houses out there. Those have all been removed. All we wanted to do is just split off the, the east side of it, which is just an open field that don't get used for anything. Since my kids don't use it for a dirt bike track anymore, um, and leave it for a new house. Here, just, I can't take care of that much. The acre and a half we plan on keeping, that would be, according to the map, one point seven acres we're cutting off. I can keep that all mowed and keep it all trimmed up and fenced with nice fences, but that out there just goes to waste. And I had a couple of friends approached me, wanted to know if they could build a new house out there, if we could divide it and sell it, so that's what we had in mind.
Okay, thank you, uh, questions for our applicant? Seems pretty straightforward.
Why, if the plan is to build one more house, why does it need to change from all residential to?
Because it's a little bit short of the two acre lots. Actually, the one we're cutting off is one point seven, so. You know, still leave it a couple of the bigger lots on that road, so. And we maintain the road. Basically, I maintain the road and, and my neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? I am you're here to talk it to this applicant?
To this motion.
Okay, fair enough. I'm, I'm looking for some public here. Everyone's welcome, I don't see any online. Um, hearing done, seeing done, I guess by looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by me, Chris Platt seconded by Kukshkornik to close the public hearing portion of our analysis. Discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, done. Okay, uh, commission, how would you wish to proceed with this application?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners, approve Olson's zoning district amendment ZDA dash zero two, dash two four. Adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings affect and conclusions of all is each or stated in the staff report.
Well said, is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application to change the zoning. Discussion of that motion?
I oppose.
Hearing, okay, um, we're discussing the motion now, would you like to argue your case?
Yes.
Please do, this is the time.
Because this area, again, we're changing the zoning. There could be urban buildings on there, fifth, five-story buildings, right? That's urban.
Well, they could have through, up to three dwellings, because it's three acres, it can only be three dwellings.
And they want to change it to urban, right?
Urban, urban residential allows for, would allow three one-acre lots on that property. But they couldn't put like multifamily or anything like that. It's still just single family, yes.
My concern with the, with area and my concern is for the applicant's health of the well, it's right under the cement plant, which we have a huge issue with air pollution. And it's right by the railroad tracks, which have uh, uh, noise pollution effects. I think we should, when we say cost-effective way of development, we should take into account the costs of health. Public health. So, I oppose.
So, so just to explore that a bit, where, where would that go more generally? Would you let me talk about this as a possibility down the road to put in buffers? Or, uh, so your, your opposition is particular one? Am I correct in understanding that would be to any additional residential development within those distances? Thank you.
The distance from the uh, property to the railroad tracks is point one mile.
And, and have you got a notion of what you'd like to see for that number?
I'm working on it, I hope to send Mr. Ayers a proposal soon.
Okay, just, just so we're all.
Just based on what other places in the world are doing.
Yeah, and you've reported, a, a lot of research has been done on this subject.
Yeah.
Um, okay, further discussion? Hearing seen done, um, Mr. Platt, how do you speak about?
Aye.
Ms. Kukshkornik?
Aye.
It's been David?
Nay.
Inclined votes aye, and the recommendation to approve it is adopted. Um, okay, we now have a scheduled public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Rockford Protection Overlay Zone. Um, so let's start with, just to tell us where we are and what the status of public comments to date has been. Sturridge?
Mr. Chair, um, so obviously we've been working on this for, for quite a while, um, we published notice of this meeting. Um, so it's, it's time to hear from the public to see if they have any comments, um, recommendations, uh, or such. Um, we've not received any comments at this point in our office, nothing written. Um, I'm trying to think if I've had, I don't think I've even had any phone calls about it, so. At this point, we're without comments unless we have some tonight, through this public hearing process, so. That's where we're at.
Um, and has, if, if you, you staff thought of anything you'd like to change at this point?
Um, Mr. Ayers has like, well, or has some issues, I mean, not issues, but like, some comments.
Okay.
Don't you have the city comments? The city provided a lot of.
Oh, right, 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 so, yeah, yeah, I forgot about city comments.
Yeah, there were a lot of them.
Correct, so the city did provide comments.
And, and can you, would that be counted in public hearings? I, I think the city has at least the status of any other.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah.
Where we don't.
Yeah, I guess maybe I'll give, give you some background, I, I did after our last meeting. Um, we, we sent them to, to the planning department for them to review, um, I met with Derek and um, Derek Taney, the community development. I don't know what his title is anymore. Um, planner or whatever, anyways, um, and Jay Smith, who's the I don't know, his is either, it's like natural resources bureau or something like that, I guess.
He's community economic development.
Okay. And Jay's is something about natural history, nat- natural. Okay, anyways, met with them, um, and we discussed their comments a little bit, they, they were just asking background questions and where some of this came from. Um, and then they sent this, um, letter to us for, for you guys to, to look at and consider, so. And if you would like to go through those, be happy to we can do that, I mean, I guess that's up to you, Mr. Chair, so.
Yeah, all right, well, let's, let's, uh, that's our, our, our staff introduction, um. Then I can kind of convene an official public hearing part of it. Mr. Ayers, would you like to weigh in now or later, or what do you think is the appropriate spot for you? Okay. Um, all right, well, then let's consider the public hearing to be open. And the public comments that we have are those of the city. So unless someone objects, uh, I guess I would be interested in your analysis of those comments and, uh, of course, we've emphasized all along that we wanted to include the city in our, as we proceeded and be respectful of their, their thoughts, so. Go right ahead.
Okay. All right, so they provided a number of comments here. I'll just kind of run through, um, planning comments and then the natural resource program administrator, oh, I guess that's probably his title. Um, so their first comment was, what's the reasoning behind the language at the ground surface within this section? Just because vulnerable feature is not found at the ground surface does not necessarily increase or decrease the vulnerability? Is it not more important that the feature be evaluated related to the increased vulnerability versus if it is found at the gra- at the surface? The way this is written implies that it is not at the surface, it is not a vulnerable feature, which is concerning and not the intent of what we found in the updated scientific information presented in the Casper Rockford Protection Plan. So it's my understanding that the reason we use at the ground surface is because um, so, whatever, chapter, section three point two point seven talks about vulnerable features at the ground surface. And it has a couple paragraphs on that, so I, I'm pretty sure that's where we got the language from, and that's strictly from the cap.
And it seems to me that it's not, it's not, the, the discussions fracturing as folds and the, and the the fracturing associated with those was not tied to the ground surface. That this, in this particular spotted was, now maybe I need to go back and read that.
Right.
With more care. Uh, was it your sense that we had tied vocal features to at the ground surface?
Um, I thought, I thought not. Yeah, I, I, I thought probably not, but I'm pretty sure that I, all I'm saying here is, is I think that language came from this section of the cap where it talks about at the ground surface. Whether that is supposed to be in there or not, that's why it's there.
Okay, all right. Anybody want to, let's, let's, let's proceed that way.
Yeah, maybe we need to dig into the cap a little bit and look, um. Yeah, so the next one is page seven through eleven. Uh, the condensing of the prohibited uses seems to reduce the guidance this section provides related to what is allowed and what is not. Staff does not, does believe that grouping all the uses under the hazardous materials definition is okay, it covers many items. It may result in more room for interpretation, but not listing more uses and examples. By not listing more exa- uh, uses and examples. Um, my analysis of that is like, I'm not sure if therefore against this language.
Well, yeah, feel free to weigh in, I think, we had that discussion, I think we were following Mr. Ayers' direction, which I don't think. But we know that pretty carefully, we were not distressed with.
Right.
You could list examples forever.
Right.
So the, the operative language is the hazardous. Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, page twelve, city staff would recommend that mitigation methods be allowed to provide some reasonable flexibility for SSI and vulnerable features. Under the current draft, if this section is removed, a variance or other relief will be needed in this instance. Um, now, I was trying to remember back to our discussions, but I thought we discussed specifically not having this option.
I, I think we we restricted the flexibility.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but could I just, so there's going to be situations where somebody on a very small lot here vulnerable features, has their septic system fail and they have to replace it? And they won't be able to meet the new criteria. So what are you gonna do?
So we, we currently have a variance section in the zoning resolution that will cover this. Um, and so we can we can use that and they can go through the variance process.
The variance might require a mitigate, I mean, so it seems like we would want them to use mitigation measures in that situation. They can't get far enough away from a vulnerable feature. But they're not going to abandon their property, then we want to move to mitigation measure. I mean, we're not, we're not ruling out mitigation measures with the way it's written, right?
No, my understanding is we, we, we it's very tightly constrained the opportunities for mitigation, like you had to first show that there was no place on the property where you could meet the setbacks. Um, then we would talk about that, and then of course, septic systems. As opposed to other things that might be subject to SSI have been moved over into the septic system regulations.
Yeah, I don't think the existing language prohibits mitigation. It just doesn't.
It doesn't say it, I've always assumed that, you know, it says the two criteria are, you have to show there's no other place to put it and you're not going to cause any damage. Well, if there is no other place to put it and it could cause damage, then we want to, then I have assumed that we then go into mitigation measures. Right.
And I agree, and I think.
But maybe that needs to be not an assumption, but thing that it says.
But there were problems with the mitigation measures, they have to be maintained that, you know, for things to get, that's what Ericson said, right?
So, not sure about that, but, but some, somebody in that situation is going to have to do so. Right, they're not going to just walk away from their property, so.
Well, I think Ms. Ericson and Mr. Gerch have serious challenges as those tiny lots come forward for replacement systems, because quite apart from anything we're doing, DEQ has regulations on things like setbacks of septic systems from wells that are not currently being met. So, uh, this is a can of worms that has not been resolved, certainly with the case of septic systems and, and, uh, Mr. Gerch, uh, I think you mentioned that, that you are working with DEQ in terms of the delegation agreement and trying to sort out how some of these problems will be addressed, and, and we have not addressed them in the APOC regs, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ayers, did you have a, have a thought about that?
Uh, yeah, I just so the commission is thinking of it, um, you know, like the, the situation, or the situation that Commissioner Kukshkornik is describing. Take away someone's ability to have a septic system. I mean, you take away their ability of a dwelling. We're getting into, you know, that's a horseshoe takings area, um. So perhaps it would be wise to consider some sort of safety valve.
But, well, all right, let's we could keep kind of playing this game between examining the territory between county zoning and, and state regulation. If the state regulation says you will not build a septic system within a hundred feet of your well, and I am unable to do that because of the geometry, there's nothing that we can do about that, is there?
Um, well, no, but the, the geology are, so those state regulations don't apply to us and what we're doing. Except that our regulations just have to be as stringent as them, I imagine somewhere in the you know, derth of water quality regulations, there's got to be some sort of safety valve, um. While the state has much larger offers than the county, I don't think that they're in the interest of paying out, um, fair market value.
But, but.
For a taking.
But again, it would it, it would not be within our authority to just say that's okay, then we would not have rules as stricter, stricter than the state, they would have to take that up with the state. Is that correct? We, we, I thought that was fundamental, we could not be less strict than.
That is correct, um, but Dave and I have discussed this and the rest of it. We're anticipating that the, that DEQ has some sort of in the alternative parameter.
But even so, that would be between the applicant and DEQ, not us.
Right, but we're modeling our regulations on that, so I'm saying.
We would mirror that in our.
Yeah, don't put the county into a situation where it has to pay a fair market value for someone's property.
All right, I guess it still sounds like perhaps we're talking past one another, if, if, if we have, if we have to in our regulations, say you can't be within a hundred feet of your well because we're mirroring state regulations, who gets sued, how's the state?
We do. We're enforcing.
Even though the state has required us to enforce their regulations.
It's not their regulations.
Okay, well, we'll let the lawyers start that. Okay, well, we'll let the lawyers start that on. Well, the point is that if it's a replacement system, then it's, you're not grandfathered, you're, you're simply coming forward with a new application.
We don't have to say it, if the state has already said it, though, right? And then we avoid the liability having said it. Or do we not trust the state to actually enforce their regulations? If it's already a state regulation.
So I'm saying, for, for the purposes of small wastewater systems. Chapter twenty-five exists. For the state, but it does not exist in Albany County, the only operative regulation is the county's small wastewater facility. Regulations, because under the delegation agreement and under statute. We have to develop our own standards, regulations, permit requirements, which are at least as stringent as chapter twenty-five. So it's a basis, but functionally, it's irrelevant to Albany County.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
So if the state says you will, you will write regulations that do X.
Which are at least as stringent.
Okay.
Uh, so the stringency is, is the standard, not identic.
Alright, but that's just at least as stringent, and we might feel that that's crazily stringent.
Yeah.
We have no option but to do as we're required to under state statute, being no less stringent. And yet that exposes the county to liability for that stringency, that seems quite bizarre.
That's really bizarre.
It's, it's, I mean, it's a passer, the legislature said, you know, it's either DEQ. Or the county, should you apply for a delegation agreement, that will be enforcing these standards.
So the only way the city, county would get out of it is to, is to abandon the delegation agreement.
Yeah, for enforcement of the regulations.
Okay. But let's, let's bring this home to today's discussion, there's nothing we can do in these regulations that will. Mitigate this issue, is that correct?
Well, no, I mean, there, you know, it depends if you, if you do want to allow mitigation methods to be had to. You know, allow for some reduced setbacks in certain instances such as, you know. Lot sizes of a certain nature, then that can be had, but.
But then someone would have to argue that through our mitigation measures, we were being as stringent.
Well, so this, this I'm saying isn't, isn't the situation. Okay. Maybe I should, these already got inflated at the beginning. Our approach is that this is for all development except for small wastewater facilities. Uh, so that's, that's a separate thing. To be worked on, but I think the city's comment was in line too. Well, you know, there, some of the setback requirements and maybe SSI. I guess findings, you know, could allow for greater mitigation methods for development generally, which is not small wastewater.
Okay, I, no, I think we did kind of drag wastewater in, an important issue, but in this case. Resolution was that we had been quite stingy with our invitation for mitigation. And that was intentional, and that's our response to the city's comment, in my opinion. So, consistent with your understanding, Mr. Gertz?
Yeah, that's what I remember.
Okay, proceed.
Alright. Okay. Um, okay, page sixteen is the SSI reviewer picked by the county, that's not completely clear. And should be stated that the county selects the reviewer and not the applicant. What we have in there does say reasonable cost of a professional consultation to the county shall be reimbursed to the county by the property owner. So the consultant's going to be hired by the county, so that affirms that the county would select the consultant, that's what I would say.
I see, clear enough to me.
Yeah.
Yes, I thought it was clear.
Um, and, and then just in general, s- s- some of these things are not substantive changes. Am I correct, Mr. errors, that if, if, if some of these are considered editorial clarifications? There is opportunity to correct them or, or modify them downstream of tonight, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, page seventeen, I? This SSI subdivision exemption section should state that only if the SSI addresses. Or addressed each lot as part of a subdivision SSI in enough detail should it be exempted. Many of the items you require for individual lots may not be known at the subdivision review level. Thus may not look at vulnerable features for each lot. If an SSI is detailed enough, the lots should be exempt, if not, new SSI should be required for each lot. Um, I guess my question to them would be, what's enough detail? Um, all of the SSI's that we've ever had, um, provided to us include. Where the vulnerable feature is, and then typically setbacks or, you know, distances from that. And that's basically what we're regulating for is a setback distance from the vulnerable feature. Um, but that being said, it's like, we need to beef this up, I don't.
I don't see what difference is between an SSI for the entire property versus subsections of the properties, it's still an investigation. If it's done credibly and that's where the peer review should be forced, then, yeah, whether. I've identified this fault and I put thirty houses along it or one subsequently, it's still the same thing as something like.
Yes, it'd be the same standards for a lot as it would be.
Maybe it would be easy enough to just modify the SSI thing and just say an adequately specific SSI was done for the subdivision. I mean, it, it wouldn't hurt to do that, would it? If it was unclear to somebody.
I mean, just to add those.
Those two words.
Adequately, I'm not sure what, you know, how do you define what's adequately, I mean, it's really not going that much farther.
But. If the situation where it was done for the subdivision, but. Um, it didn't really meet our requirements for the lot, which is the situation they're referring to, right? That would give you a way to say, well, this isn't adequately specific for that lot.
I, I just have a hard time thinking of how that, how that. I mean, I agree, let's, let's cover the possibilities, but. All of the elements of an SSI are. They're not, they're not scale dependent, they're, they're, it's there, it's not, but.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so now this may not be super valid now, but like the original intent was. Um, or what I would have liked, liked to see originally is like when we have these subdivisions come in. We have, you know, the SSI done at that time, it shows exactly where the vulnerable features are. It can even give you a setback to make sure you're a hundred feet, you know, all across that, some maps like that. So then when somebody applies for their specific lot, then they can say, hey, you know, this is where it's at and this is where I can't build, you know? Um, right now, it's like our, our lot size is thirty-five acres, it's pretty big, we're not seeing subdivisions, we probably won't. Um, if that's what it is, so I don't know, you know, how valid it'll be, so I guess what's in here. Or now would probably apply only to those, those subdivisions that exist, and I've already had a. Um, SSI provided as part of the application process.
There are two of those.
Northwest.
Three, alright, Rocky Ridge.
Rocky Ridge.
More rocks.
Stone, Stone Ridge, yeah. Yep, three.
Alright, yeah.
But that would have the advantage of when a person bought a lot, they would know its status. It wouldn't have, it wouldn't be in question, the way it's written now.
Yeah.
Yeah, which would be a good thing.
And as I'm thinking about those three, which I reviewed with some care, I. Don't think they would change in any material way where they do on a lot, by lot basis. Just to think of those examples for what it's worth.
I would be including the SSI on a lot, by lot basis with a subdivision permit.
Yeah, I mean, so if it's an SSI connected to a. Um, subdivision permit application, they're going to be, you know, considering the proposed lots, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. So, so I guess your question though, carves out a piece of an SSI. For something that wasn't a subdivision, for some other kind of facility that would not be exempt under this. Because we just, you know, we just exempted subdivisions.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, okay, yes, alright.
Okay. Okay, um, Natural Resource Program Administrator provided the following comments, page eight, table prohibited uses. Item four is the intent to prohibit commercial buildings. Providing lawn care and pest services or prohibit these services on all property. Or that commercial business operations of land care or lawn care or pest. Control service be regulated, adding some additional language may help clarify the intent. Um, I mean, my understanding is the proposed, proposed verbiage is. Um, commercial land, well, first it says commercial land uses, not commercial buildings. Um, the, the intent is to prohibit the operation of. Those land uses that include lawn care and pest control type stuff, and I thought it was pretty clear.
Yeah, I don't understand the problem.
And if you're prohibiting the business, you're prohibiting the building.
Right, 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 right.
But you're not prohibiting a homeowner from using a company, no, come and do that, because presumably they know what they're doing. They're not going to overapply fertilizers or.
The state regulates all that, kind of preemptive. Moving on, page nine. Okay, uh, table prohibited land uses, item seven was the definition of a dump on a residential property. Um, clarifying this section and what these terms mean is important. So I mean, the dump is in the, the section that's, these are the examples. Um, I mean, we can add like garbage dump or something, I mean, I was looking through the statutes, just kind of looking where they have. And it was garbage dump, I was like, okay, well, I don't, I think landfill people hate the word dump.
I mean, if you're going around the county, you do see properties that look like junkyards, and they have decrepit vehicles that probably are.
Licking batteries.
Yeah, you know, their, their dad's nineteen forty truck or whatever. So maybe that does need to be clear.
But, but it's only provided as an example, and so the offense there isn't having a dump, it's handling. Hazardous materials in a irresponsible way, and that is prohibited, so again, I don't. Someone at, at the advice of staff, we didn't try to list every.
Correct.
Possible explanation.
So we wanted to go, just like landfill, um, solid waste facility or intermediate processing center.
I'm fine with what it says, but.
Cause it does say commu- commercial accumulation, so. I mean, if you're commercially accumulating on residential property, then you're already just violating.
That's a nuisance regulation.
Yeah, they're nuisance.
I mean, I'll just do in violation of any residential zoning district, so. Solid waste facility landfill, is that different than solid waste facility?
Could be, you could have a, a baling facility that's solid waste. Oh, yeah, maybe they have, yeah.
I mean, and you could picture somebody who doesn't want to pay the landfill fees, just, you know. In a hole on their land.
Yeah, I mean, that's illegal under DEQ regulations, if it's.
Yeah, that's, that's illegal anywhere on residential property under nuisance.
Okay.
Right, um, I'm pretty sure, yeah, DQ regulates dumps, you know, specific types, if there has hazardous material, I'm. Pretty sure they regulate.
Oh, absolutely.
Should we just strike landfill or dumps on residential or commercial property? And just leave solid waste facility or intermediate processing center?
I think it'd be fine, yeah. I mean, honestly, these are just like the examples, they're not the regulation, I mean, they're the regulations, they're the regulations, but they're the examples.
Yeah, no, I just say the residential or commercial properties in the lot.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I have no problem with, with editorial.
Alright, we good there? Alright, page eleven, table prohibited uses, item ten, what does the following mean, crops, vegetation. Forage growth or post-harvest residues are not sustained in the normal growing season. Over any portion of the parcel or facility, clarifying this section and what these terms mean is important. Um, I have no comments in this, I'm not really sure of this. Meaning, is it just like? Cause this is the same part as, like CAFO, right? Like this is under the same thing?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
So I'm not sure why.
So this is tied to a pre-existing like definition in chapter one, right?
Is that what it is?
Chapter two.
It could be.
Yeah.
Okay, cause I just looked at, I was like, I don't know what this is from.
It just means you have more animals than the land can support, you're above your carrying capacity, right? So maybe we just say that. No.
It's not.
Yeah.
I don't know what.
Just find. Yeah, no, then, it kind of shot, right, where it's just like you're not producing the feed.
That's what we're getting at with all that.
Yeah, this is.
It is a lot of words.
It's not, it was somewhere else in the.
Could be in the statutes. No, that's where he was looking, the only where we have, he looked up the word crops and it's, it's only under agricultural uses. There's nothing else, it's not under CAFO, CAFO is not, he looked at that, it's not like there.
Oh, well, wasn't this language directly from CAP?
Oh, it could be from the cap, yeah, we were looking at the zoning. Now, look at the, the cap. Yeah, sure.
Uh, table six one in the cap, looks like. Commercial animal feeding operations, animals.
Okay.
Where A animals have been are, yeah, it's the cap, table six one. Recommended additional prohibited activities.
So we took this language from the cap, that's why it's in here. After some searching.
So can we simplify then?
It's also on table thirty-six, or number thirty-six of the prohibited activities in that cap.
With those words?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I mean, I'm not sure we're gonna have. The animal unit.
Oh, that was it.
I, I don't think we're gonna have too much of a problem with, with all the crops that are growing up in that area.
Well, there's a lot of, I mean, there's orange growth.
Which is like grass, like, yeah, okay.
Yeah, but.
Bitter breath.
Alright, sage.
Sage.
Okay.
It's already up there, it's up there.
Wonder if the work was maintained rather than sustained, again, I have to look at this one with care. So I'm looking, you wanna, you wanna bring up, uh, ten there, Mr. Williams for us?
Do what?
Bring up number, the.
In the cap?
Yeah, can we see it on the screen?
You want the cap, where it says it, the cap, though?
Well, I was looking at our regulations, let's, let's remind ourselves, just the context for their comment. Before I start, oh, that's my, I, I'm ten in the table.
Yeah.
I can't read. On the spread, commercial.
I think they were referring to.
Weren't they referring to that attempt?
Yes.
Of the temple prohibited uses, which refers to. Of the table prohibited uses, which refers to commercial animal feeding operations involving more than a thousand animal units. Okay, I'm trying to find my way through the ends. So we're, the, the. Suggested aqua protection regulations ban commercial animal feeding operations. Involving more than a thousand animal units per facility. Twenty thousand animal unit these days.
Ten animals per acre.
Or ten per acre.
Where they.
What they don't understand is crops, vegetation.
Right.
Fluid growth or post harvest residues. Are not sustained in the normal growing season over any portion. Of the parcel of facility, that's the confusing part.
I've been inclined to agree that it is a bit confusing.
It is very long sentence.
All that stuff is vegetation, right?
So is this like saying that?
To say the other thing. Crops are vegetation, forage growth is vegetation, post harvest residue is vegetation, can we just simplify? Say vegetation is.
Over, over any portion. It seems a little. Saying that you can't have a. Animal feeding operation unless. Every single inch of your parcel. Sustaining.
Okay.
Vegetation. Which, so if you, if you have like one rock, it's over.
Yeah, the sense of it is it's not a feedlot where you're bringing in feed, but not a trough.
Yeah, you're not.
Right.
Yeah, boring. The, the question is, is it trucked in or is grown on the spot? I think that's the confusion, right?
I think so, if you're, if you're pasturing them, that's different than if you are.
Feeding them.
Keeping them there for the purposes of bringing in feed.
Right.
Alright, that's what it.
And it already says they can't be stabled or confined and fed.
Yep.
It would almost make sense to just strike it, strike all of it with ant crops.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
I, I'm thinking that might resolve that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that'll make it simpler.
If we're having this much problem, somebody in the future is gonna be like, what is this?
I, I appreciate the care with which they read this, that's, that's quite encouraging.
But what does this have to do with the example?
Okay. I'm, I'm, well, just striking that offensive.
It doesn't add clarity.
It does not, that's obfuscation. Okay. Did you get that?
Were you removing that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Then the remainder of their comments addressed a troublesome issue that we, has yet to be resolved, but it's. Now outside the APZ regulations, so.
The replacement versus.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's.
I didn't make any comments on that because we're already done with that, so.
I mean, that replacement versus, we've struggled with that ourselves and, and. Um, somewhat reluctantly decided to move forward. Depending what we, what we see from your DEQ. Negotiations. Good, Mr. Erz, you wanted to weigh in on this generally?
Yeah.
Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you want to go back to the very first item?
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 sorry. Got the gun there slightly, let us. Let us treat, give it the same treatment and look at.
The ground surface.
The ground surface, okay, so now where, let's, where do we find the definition of, uh, vulnerable features?
Uh, that was kind of an issue with the cap was that it wasn't a singularized. Like definition provided, it kind of referenced. A few definitions and disparate sections from what I remember.
Alright, so right there in the start, vulnerable feature, any physical feature at the ground surface that enhances the potential for rapid infiltration.
We can strike at the ground.
Strike at the ground surface, I, yeah, I'm surprised that's there, please. It's gonna have other eyes across the page.
That was the note I made also.
Strike it. Any objections to that?
Um. So, I guess, would it still be from, I mean, I, I guess at what point does it stop? Does it continue to, you know, add inferno, the center of the earth?
Any physical feature that enhances the potential for rapid infiltration, so what's going on in the mantle does not. Enhance the potential for rapid infiltration, so I think that the definition would cover that.
It's there.
The, the third dimension.
So, yeah.
It's the depth of the aquifer.
Well, or.
Right, that's, yeah, that's exactly my point, how are you anticipating applicants are gonna address that?
It's the depth beyond which it does not enhance the potential for rapid infiltration of for contamination. I think that's. That something is happening at seven hundred feet down does not enhance the potential. So I think a. A geologist could. Proceed under the definition, if we're looking for things that enhance the potential for aqua contamination, that's the kernel. And if those, if there is something, I can't imagine what it would be at a depth of five hundred feet that enhances the, says contamination, then it is a vulnerable feature.
So are these gonna be things that are readily available through their literature searches?
Well, be- because the APZ is about surface contaminants, um, just. There's very little chance that something at a depth beyond, I don't know, twenty feet is gonna have any, have that characteristic. So the great majority of everything I can think of, but my imagination essence of it, would be. Something you would find at the ground surface or expressed, expressed at the ground surface. A fold, for example, is evident at the ground surface, that's other mapped, it's, it's, its geometry continues into the subsurface. And its enhancement of vulnerability continues subsurface, but its presence is known. Through observation rather than, say seismic lines or something.
This will come, but it'll be something that's observable at the ground surface, which is what you should.
It could be.
It's, it's, it's presence would be manifested in some ground surface feature, now that doesn't mean that the. A fault is a three dimensional object. Okay, we see its, it, its impact on the surfaces, the displacement typically of straight up.
Okay.
And, but that fault extends to. Current theories they extend well beyond the depth of the aquifer. So the presence of a fault would be the flag that would tell us we're a vulnerable feature.
Okay.
Let me.
Yeah.
It's okay, I'm sorry.
Let me give an example. You have a narrow fault. That is filled with sand, you don't see it on the surface. But it is a vulnerable feature. Because anything that leaks down through the sand will get through that fault. If you ride your bike on a schoolyard, you'll see a lot of these.
I'm saying you can see them.
You, no, I mean, that they are filled with sand. In fact, I have videos of how the water percolates through the sand. And then shows up in a, you wanna see the video?
No, 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 I, I completely believe you, um.
So, so.
But it's.
Sometimes you can see it here. Okay, because, you know, nineteen thirties, we had a big dust all years. A lot of our features were filled with sand, but the feature is still underneath, you can't see it here, but you can see it here. I have videos of how it's happening. Am I right?
Well, yeah, and, and as I read further in the definition, one certainly cannot see at the surface whether it's less than seventy-five feet into the groundwater.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
This doesn't mean that every vulnerable feature is being identified or is identifiable, can't just by inspection, but. If a geologist walks across the property and does identify something like burns setting or rough, yeah, that should be included in the part.
No, yeah, I am, okay.
So I, 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 I think we just strike the ground surface, we're good to go.
And it's not gonna be creating a situation where, I mean, the county is expecting like, you know, three D mapping of. No. The subsurface wire, okay?
Are you gonna post that that video?
Just a thorough SSI.
Yeah, I, I mean, I appreciate the pushback, Mr. Erz, but I, I don't think that that opens this to any very elaborate. Three D seismic review, ground penetrating radar. Um, in, unless there was some. Pretty overt reason why that seemed appropriate between the investigator and the, and the reviewer. Hearing Commissioner Ben David, I think of the. Sherman Hills areas. Geologically has this layer of sand on top of all the faults and the fractures and everything. Now, it's difficult to discern where those are, but if one were able to through some method, then we would want those to be accommodated.
We do have geological maps, so we should be able to.
You know, what, what the, the mappers typically kind of stop at the edge where they can't see it anymore, or they, or they dash it in because it's unclear, but.
I did find a video if anybody's interested.
Well, well, we can, we can take that up, uh, a later point, but.
Okay.
If we're comfortable with that.
I mean, these are questions that came up when it was at or near, uh, the ground surface, um. So, I think it's good that this is. In the record.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. And, and you're reminding us that that used to say at or near, and we struck near, is that what you're suggesting?
Um, I, well, we were taking, I guess, exactly what was like out of the cap, the updated cap. To create that vulnerable feature.
And, and they use that language.
No, not at or near. That was what was it, that's what's in there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because what has been claimed of this in the past is. I mean, exactly what I was saying, that, okay, so now we're looking at. You know, however many hundred feet underground, how do we, how do we know that? Are you expecting us to?
But again, we can't, we can't see the depth to groundwater, so we've, we have, uh.
Well, but isn't that based on like a little better understood monitoring or determination of that, a little more standardized? Um, you know, based on wells, well logs.
That's, that's where one finds that, but one similarly can't find evidence of falls and faults in well logs that are not immediately apparent at the surface. Yeah.
It seems like we're changing it just so. If we do know about it, we can. Call it what it is, which is a vulnerable feature.
Alright.
We're not requiring elaborate methods to find it, but sometimes you know about it.
Right.
And you want to be able to count it.
Right.
I totally agree.
Yeah. Well, here's a.
Wow, that's what gets charged every season.
So the, interestingly, the, the new, the newest wells that the city and the university were fighting about, I assume you've probably heard, saw that go by. Uh, there was on the corner of Fourth Fifth and Crowe.
Mm-hmm.
So previously there had been no faults mapped in that area, but once the, there was two wells that went in just north of that intersection. There's one almost at the intersection. And the difference in depth to the top of the Casper is startling. It's really between the two, and it's an indication that there's a fault in between the two that had previously not been recognized. And, and Stan Tech. Change, they moved the, the. What, what's, been called seventy-five foot line, that isn't quite the, the vulnerability line to accommodate the enhanced probability of that. Now recognized feature. So there's a, a little real example here, just the last few years of discovering a vulnerable feature through subsurface investigation. But we certainly would not require that.
Okay.
And, and, yeah, that statement's welcome in the record. So we're, we're moving forward with the removing the ground surface.
Yeah, yes.
And that addresses the last of the. Of the city's comments, and we're back to. The general. Comments that Mr. Erz was gonna share with us.
Yes. Um. So I guess, uh, yeah, my apologies for not catching this a little sooner. Um, perhaps it was helpful to kind of take some, some time. Away from it and come back and read it with some fresh eyes, but. Uh, I guess throughout the SSI requirements, it discusses. Things such as where subsurface wastewater disposal is proposed. Um. And we have an evaluation of any proposed wastewater facility, so actually it appears in two places. But. Before I'd, you know, been reading that as small wastewater facility, um. But that is not, not necessarily the case. Um, but what we are going to run into is that any subsurface disposal system. Um, if we are regulating it in some manner, even, you know, requiring an evaluation of it. Um. In terms of its potential for contamination and impacts of the Casper aquifer and its recharge area. That is something which is, uh, promulgated, or sorry, regulated by DEQ. Um, under their qual- water quality rules, which, if you read that, chapter eleven. Um, it has some pretty. Uh, it has, you know, broad ranging considerations for their permits. Um, and therefore anything we would do is duplicating or conflicting, and it's impermissible. So what those can be, uh, explicitly narrowed to small wastewater facilities, however. Um, we also. Changed right above the table of prohibited activities that. Um. All development except small wastewater facilities permitted by the planning department shall meet the requirements of the subsection. So there would have to be, um, some change in probably both of those places. Um, and I guess I was, I was wondering what the commission's thoughts were on. The subsurface wastewater disposal.
Okay, so now, now, but we have that listed under, is that in the table of prohibited uses, is that?
Uh, so which one?
The subsurface disposal of wastewater, which.
That is in.
It's seven, C, I B.
Yeah, it's in the SSI and report shall include the following, and then it's on.
Uh, line two ninety-one of the red line period.
Now, now, we distinguish between, we're going to look into it versus we're going to regulate it.
So I, um, well, okay, so the first one, where subsurface wastewater disposal is proposed within the APZ documentation of the facility will comply with the county's. Design construction standards for small wastewater facilities and regulations, that should just be changed to where small wastewater facility. Um, where use of a small wastewater facility is proposed. Uh, it's. That, but.
And arguably that, that, that blanket, uh. Excepting systems are out of this whole APZ. Cover that or at least the two are in conflict, I guess.
Yeah, that, then they're in conflict. Um, so if you want, as part of the SSI, we have to narrow the scope of the exclusion of. A small wastewater. Facility subsurface.
So we're gonna look at road net for line two oh eight, that's what I'm talking about within SOIs and the, the clean version.
Oh, sorry, I'm looking at red line, um. Yes. Okay.
Alright, but I mean, that, that statement strikes me as inoffensive because it's, it's, uh. It, it, it just says you're going to comply with this other reg.
Yeah, but what it says is subsurface wastewater disposal, that encompasses a much broader thing than small wastewater.
It will comply, because the county's. It will comply because the county's design construction standards for small waste facilities does not include all subsurface wastewater disposal.
Correct.
All right, I'm just slowly covering up speed here. So your suggestion is what?
Um. I don't have a definitive one. You could do it. It could be done in a few different ways. Uh, it could be that there's an SSI required for small wastewater permits through the small wastewater facility regulations. Uh, or it could be that essentially, let's see, what is that up top here where it says no or all development except small wastewater facilities permitted by the planning department located within the APOZ shall meet the requirements of the subsection. And then something to the extent of however, small wastewater facilities within the APOZ shall comply with the county's design and construction standards for small water facilities and regulations and the SSI requirements of this chapter or of this, uh, section to the extent they apply to small wastewater facilities, something along those lines. I don't have exact language right now.
Well, I guess I don't see where that gets you off the hook. Cause you still got, so what about subsurface wastewater disposal that is not a septic system?
Well, no, and then you would, you would have to change back in the SSI requirements that it is where small wastewater, uh, systems are proposed within the APOZ or along with development within the APOZ for, for use with development, you know, something along those lines, then documentation. So narrow it like instead of subsurface wastewater disposal, it is use of small wastewater systems.
Where would other subsurface wastewater disposal land?
It's out of bounds. Is what I'm saying. Anything you do with it is going to conflict with or duplicate DEI's requirements.
And it's, I mean, we haven't studied that at all as a commission certainly. Standing right here, we'd ask her, but so I'm thinking of things like French drains. Are those regulated by DEQ as subsurface waste disposal facility?
Is that wastewater disposal?
It is, I mean.
It's stormwater, which is separately.
That not wastewater, where subsurface wastewater disposal?
Yeah, I mean, so that's the thing is that isn't defined in here. Um, so it's gonna, it would go by its, um, you know.
Yeah, what is subsurface?
Septic system. Big septic system.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Septal, septal.
They've already prohibited injection wells. Can't picture what else there is.
So you, so we're thinking things like French drains would not have wastewater disposal in your mind?
Well, so, so if, if any, oh, that's interesting. I didn't think of that. Um, so then if any, uh, I guess other type of septic system, except for small wastewater facilities are prohibited by the table of prohibited land uses, then honestly, these only can talk about, um, small wastewater facilities just by the operation, so you might as well be specific. Because I do, I do not believe that a French drain is.
Is it wastewater?
Subsurface wastewater.
It's rainwater. Yeah.
I mean, it could be contaminated, but.
Almost always is, because that's what you're doing is disposing of. No, it's, it's urban runoff, it's parking lots and so forth, which there's a recommendation that we did not take to develop stormwater management regulations. That's another story.
The one feature of the area that the comms really like is stormwater, storm drains.
Yeah.
They use them to travel underneath the town. We have tracking. Using them.
So is, is all of that business under those various classes of underground action control seems to bear on us? We modified that.
Yeah, I, uh, yeah, commissioner, um, hey, I get it much better.
Right.
Handle of that than I did.
Well, part of me just says that we're going to get mired in this, in this little bit of it excessively, but we want to get it right. So what are, what are our options?
And also make it clear to the people that are regulated by this.
Right. Certification is, is available to us, as I say, downstream of moving this in forward. Uh, that's my concern, and it should not be a dominant concern is that we move these on up to the board.
Well, okay, so what I'm saying.
As soon as we can, so I'm looking for some quick fixes here.
This language is just, it's, it's creating challenges. It's creating, it's creating challenges to these that don't need to be there. As someone who's been dealing with litigation in this for the past two years, well, no, sorry. Almost three years. Yeah.
Yeah, I, but I think our, our, I guess I can just want to speak for myself or the rest of the commission that the decision to continually refer to state regulations. I mean, it, it, it was the broadest possible interpretation of, oh, that's duplicative, could cover a very large bunch of ground.
Yeah.
And.
But that's what the Wyoming experience.
Well, but that's, it's like our discussion about boreholes and wells, middle of construction standards. Those of us who've lived and worked with state regulations on the other side for years and years and years, there's still huge holes in those and then in their application and their writing, and there's gaps in coverage between, say, gate and fish stage nurse office and DEQ. So I, that's my reluctance to just say, oh, DEQ's got it covered. I mean, it doesn't, doesn't, they call it, you just start right out with thou shalt not pollute the waters of the state of Wyoming. Well, then it proceeds for 26 chapters to tell you how you can pollute the waters of Wyoming legally. So I, I just hate to be emasculating our aquifer protection regulations in pursuit of this no possible argument of duplicative status.
For, okay.
Appreciate you being very cautious as our legal advisor.
Not, not on subsurface wastewater disposal. I'm not.
Okay.
No, that chapter covers the entirety of those systems. Every single aspect of like design and construction, because of how broad it is, says like shall consider all of these things. And because of that, the county just can't make its authority where there isn't any. But, and I mean, you know, it's, you're right, this is your policy decision, and I can follow up with the commissioners.
But your advice to the commissioners is to strip the address of all subsurface disposal from these regulations.
Especially if we're already prohibiting all of them.
But we're allowed to prohibit a class, we're just not allowed to regulate within it, if I remember that nuance correctly.
You can prohibit activities which DEQ would otherwise regulate, but if you do not prohibit them, then regulation is taken on by the state.
So item eight of our table of reviews, for example, is where we did that. So what's the, what's the, is there an articulable fix?
Yeah, um, and the SSI requirements change subsurface wastewater disposal to small wastewater facility. And then you got to fix some, it up top. Narrow that carve out.
The carve out, that blanket exemption.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's, let's play with some words. What do you want to do?
Okay. Um, well.
Okay, with everybody. So 208 is, and, and that makes sense, and we should go up to the top and see.
Okay.
The car.
Okay, so all development except small wastewater facilities permitted by the planning department located within the APOZ shall meet the requirements of this subsection. Small wastewater facilities are, and then you could say small wastewater facilities within the APOZ shall comply with the county's designing construction standards for small wastewater facilities and regulations for permitting construction, solid modify small wastewater facilities. Shall meet with the requirements of the subsection. However, small wastewater, or. Yeah.
Mr. Gurch. How long is the public comment period still open? Another two weeks?
Um, so we've had our 45 days.
Oh, we have.
This is the, the published public hearing. But, I mean, you can keep doing the public hearing as long as you want, you could table it, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm just curious if the period is over.
Yeah, we've met that requirement.
Okay.
So on, on those regs, if we change those regs and at some threshold level, then we, then we start over.
So it has to be with like outside of the scope of what was published.
Nothing we're talking about is outside the scope in your opinion?
Okay.
Well, all right, then, then options open to us is to take this wordsmithing home with us rather than try to do it on the spot.
I was going to suggest that.
And come back to this.
And the simple proposal.
At our next meeting or especially.
Yeah.
So if there's concern that we're loosening things too much by taking out subsurface wastewater disposal, is there a category that you're concerned about that could be put into the prohibited uses table? To avoid? Creating a problem there?
Well, if you were to simply ban subsurface wastewater disposal, which I think is perhaps going too far. But, but that would, I mean.
Yeah.
Good point.
Yeah, we can add language to the section where the bullfolds.
Yeah, and apparently we have to restrict ourselves to classes, right? But maybe that.
Oh, you don't have to. I think that's just. No, no, I, I mean, in fact, it's be better if you kind of defined it like more as a land use than like a permitted class under DEQ's regulations.
But we, we could ban septics on the, on the aquifer, right?
Yeah.
We, we just can't.
If you wanted to cause a riot.
Right, but yeah, if I've understood, that's right, that's our advice here. We, we can't say we're going to kind of allow them because then we're, we're in this whole duplication territory.
Yeah, well, right, yeah.
Man, if you change line 208 to small wastewater facilities, what is wrong with this section C here as it reads right now that you just read partially?
Um, because it's saying all development except small wastewater facilities permitted by the planning department located within the APOZ shall meet the requirements of the subsection. The subsection is the entirety of the APOZ regulations. So therefore, you're simultaneously saying that it's exempt in its entirety and that it has to be addressed in SSI.
Although, although that, I think there's still room there. I can, I can ask you to tell me about anything in the SSI. I just can't regulate it. I could, I could demand accounting of, right?
I don't, I don't know if it's that clear.
You think that would color, be colorably regulating?
Yes. Because what do regulatory bodies do with information if not use it to regulate?
Well, but they use it in a whole variety of, what is like how to, how to do their zoning, or do they want to draw those kinds of lines? Where the APOZ even applies, I would be interested in knowing septic system density to help me make that decision, so. I, I think information can be separated from regulation rather than constantly, what do you want to know that for?
To an extent, yeah. But, you know, these are regulations, not purely informational opportunities. I mean, it has teeth.
Yes.
Attached to a permit. So it's an opportunity to deny a permit.
Okay, so I'm sorry, I may have interrupted your train of thought there, Mr. Platt.
I think we should look at it with fresh eyes and pause there.
Okay.
Substantive change that everybody can, you know, good.
And I'll confess, I had not gone through word by word with the city comments, so if we're seeing most of those as editorial, we could take the opportunity to do another kind of cleanup.
Sure.
Ms. Kornick, what's your pleasure?
If we're going to make changes, they should be thoughtfully done, so I, I am wary of delaying, it's too long.
But would we, so let's play with some thoughts there, give ourselves a couple of weeks. I'm, we're likely to just defer to the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah. And maybe have.
Two weeks.
Provide some suggested language that we can get in that time.
And we're operating within the envelope of not substantive changes, not changes outside the subject matter. Okay.
Right.
Should we schedule a meeting in two weeks?
Sure. When's the date? Two weeks. Not going to be here the 26th. Is that two weeks? It is.
It's two weeks, I think. I mean, Tuesdays are, there's a special about Tuesdays are special meetings. So, Mr. Gurch, your, any thoughts on this special meeting idea?
On the date or?
Um, let's do this as a special meeting.
Oh, I don't care.
Yeah, staff time is involved.
Can we do it through, during business hours, just for an hour?
Doesn't hurt my feelings any. I'm completely open.
And that will open more opportunities to and not ask staff to come back at night again.
Okay, let's.
Oh, yeah.
Something the week of the, okay, two weeks, we give it, get us into the week of the 23rd. You're gone all week.
I'll be back Thursday evening.
Either one of those is fine with me.
Fine with me.
Thursday evening, 27.
Well, what evening or what time in the evening?
27, uh.
Five is fine.
But.
Or maybe a little later if it works better for the standing.
I'll go.
Thursday is 27?
No, I don't, I don't recognize normal working hours, so.
I would prefer earlier if possible.
Okay, and we're waiting, you're, you're the one that said be back, you'd be back Thursday.
Yeah, well, you know, I'll be back middle of the afternoon, four, three.
So can we do four?
Four o'clock.
Yeah. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, Thursday at four.
Yep.
So Matt, again, the goal here would be to correct the language in the subsection C and change line two oh eight to small wastewater facilities.
Uh, that's two oh eight and are you the red line version? I'm looking at the. Now I'm looking at the.
And one forty?
One forty, one forty five, that section. Plane version.
One forty?
One forty eight.
Well, let's, let's notice the meeting to address city comments. Can we do that more generally?
Yeah, let's try to finish. Close.
So it's, it's two oh eight and then also two forty seven.
In the plane.
Um, yeah, there are two two provisions in the SSI investigation. Uh, like sub or subparagraph C. And then I guess whatever the next level is under that, it's a like Roman IV and also Roman IX.
And also what's that?
And also one forty?
Yeah, what, what is one forty?
That's the all developments, that's all.
Yeah, and that, and then I guess also a, um, sort of a, a relook at the provision of UIC wells or systems uh, within the.
The table number issues, that's number eight. But is that acceptable that we, we noticed the meeting for city comments?
Yeah.
We can just notice it because we're messing with the APOZ.
Or whatever. Okay.
Just keep it general.
Okay, I just wanted to confine ourselves, but it, it's not, it's just APOZ. Okay. Okay, so it's four things.
Yes.
All right.
Although I.
Well, let's see, I remember, I was the Mr. Gurch, or if I think of a six and a seventh, then you're.
No, of course, but I mean, I'm thinking about mass concerns here. I want to make sure I, I know at least what mass concern, maybe all new.
Okay, he's gonna get us some to, to cure these and, and yeah, every time you read it, you find something new and then you decide, well, is that refined about
Right.
changing or not, but, but.
I, I, the, I would not have done that if this wasn't like a foundational thing.
No, and it, it, as you say, it's been something you spent a lot of time on the last couple of years, so.
Um.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, number eight, though, uh, within the table of revenue uses, I cannot do that.
Okay.
Um.
We will, uh, we will drag you in this head and I'll, I'll talk to her. Okay, I'll, I'll take that this time. Okay. Um. Since we are not bringing this to a vote today, we, we said, we're all, okay, we're, we're, all right, we're gonna just move on. All right. Um. Other thoughts, comments on the APOZ amendments? And, and I, I like the optics of a meeting to very carefully consider the city's comments. I appreciate the fact that they have been engaged and take a lot of time. I shouldn't say optics as though it's trivial, though. It's an important thing and we're doing it correctly. Um, okay, uh, we have just a couple more items on the agenda. You want to take a short break?
I'm okay.
Okay, all right, uh, you guys? We see it. Okay. Um. I had a couple more thoughts on the on the, uh, the recommendations. I thought that was a useful exercise. Um. I would like to have it reach back to the, the whole cap, uh, like, like the boundary. That's another place that had the cap that recommended one thing and we'd done something differently.
Those are.
Those are things that I was thinking it would be good to have of memorialized as to why we didn't do that.
Okay.
Um, and that, a, a brief question. I appreciate Mr. R sticking around for what? What do you think of of, of this and in the next agenda item, there's an explanation of what's going on. I was wondering if you might have some concern that, that we then that kind of becomes part of the administrative record and has the effect of regulation. Is that explanation assumed to be complete if we say we, we didn't do this thing that the cap recommended because of X, Y, Z? Is that problematic legally in any way? I would think not because it's all been discussed in open meetings. And, and I don't have a, do I have a specific example of? It occurred to me, I think, when I was reading the, the next piece. Yeah, all right. So like down here, um, item, item ten where there's a simply statement is not included. I'm looking at, at Mr. Gurch's table. There are several items there, ten, eleven, twelve, I think. Like the, to the extent not to be provided, da, da, da. It just says not included. My inclination would be I'd like to hear some explanation of why didn't you include it? So that's a question. Do you, is there any problem with Mr. Gurch trying to articulate what our thinking was?
No, I mean, it's gonna be, I guess, like more highly persuasive to the court. Uh, if, you know, this were to be reviewed, but doesn't mean that it's necessarily the end all be all. Um, because, I mean, I remember that one specifically. Um, and it, you know, that we had a discussion on it in May or April.
Right, and we just thought that that was, that was unnecessary and it was kind of assumed and hazardous materials define themselves. It would just, it would just seem to be good for this exercise to get that down. So we aren't constantly thinking, hey, we discussed that. Why did we do what we did?
Yeah, that, that could, I mean, that could be very helpful. So, but not legally, it's not an issue.
Okay, then I, I would encourage uh, another pass through this table, Mr. Gurch, uh, to pick up things like the boundary and anything else. Uh, and I got thinking maybe even the taxpayer, we paid all this money for the cap and they said we should do this. Why didn't you do it? Uh, and to reassure ourselves and the board that we carefully considered everything that our consultant.
Well, and it's like proper abandonment of unused wells. You know, that, that's an exercise of, uh, like education and outreach, not regulation.
And, and that's a good, a good explanation for why that didn't show up in regulation. We thought it belonged over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go through the, the cap with a little bit more, uh, looking, I guess. I, I really, I just found a couple of chapters that had a bunch of recommendations and threw them in here. So there's probably some more like, I'll look at the specifically the boundary line. The rest of the chapters just to make sure that I, I've hit them all. This wasn't super thorough.
Well, the way I, the way I did it was I just word searched recommend.
Okay, yeah, I can do that. That'd be easy.
That's the beauty of word searches and because they did sprinkle their recommendations around to some extent. And that's true in your next piece in terms of the management strategies. There was that one little section that talked about that, but, but they had recommendations elsewhere that that will come up on just to, let's say, just to sweep for recommendation and you'll
Okay.
Find a, a lot of that stuff. Uh, the one specific one that I was kind of looking for here was the, was stormwater. It was
The what?
Stormwater management. And it was a discussion as we were putting the cap together and, you know, the city is sensitive to this. Um, the position of the county here to four has been, we would like not to see urban runoff upon the aquifer. That Larrdyce proposal, this was a central issue there. Uh, so I'd, I'd like to bring forward the recommendation from the cap and it recommended that the, the city and the county develop regulations for management of, of potentially contaminating stormwater. And I think it's a good recommendation. It should show up on our list.
Sounds good. Yeah, the SSI. Uh, one of those.
Yeah, it's a, it's a more general issue than just SSI's and it's sensitive because the city would like all these guys would love to have detention ponds.
Yeah, well, but for our purposes, within the non-core reality county, you're thirty five, going for thirty five acre. So I guess how, how do we fit into that picture?
Oh, if, if someone were to propose, say the city were to propose, we would like you to, we would we wanted to build a detention pond on tributary X. It's got nothing to do with subdivisions. It's just a discussion of they'd like to put a facility outside the city to detain stormwater.
Okay.
We'd like to have some guidance on where we think that's acceptable and where it's not. Potentially, that was the, that was the point of the recommendation in the cap. And that was the issue. But Larrdyce was an internal to the city issue, but I know they're they're troubled by this. Their own planning commission suggested that they require all runoff be conducted off the aquifer before it was detained.
Most, most of the stormwater, while the stormwater doesn't, I know anything about it is because raccoons use it. We track them under the ground. Most of the, uh, systems, though, I think nine in Laramie. Most of them flow into the Eagle Spring Creek, Old River. But there are some that um, disappear in, into the ground. I think the current ones are all in a Satanka protection zone, but not all of them are.
If your lights brings entirely onto the most primitive member, that's probably.
Yeah, is that the one by the hospital?
That's the, the Imperial Heights storm drainage kind of runs out oddly in the northeast corner of, of that division, subdivision. Is where it open discharges into that drainage that ultimately comes out past the old Walmart in Snowy Range. And it soaks in like crazy over that whole thing. I've, I've watched that where it's a full CFS by the time you get down to Snowy Range. Um. So for example, that's, that's gonna be years before anybody does anything about that, but that's the kind of thing where if we want to look at sources of, of aquifer recharge and potentially contaminated sources, urban runoff is increasingly receiving attention in water contamination circles where it's, it's just Duke's mixture of everything that comes off lawns and pavement, parking lots. Right, anyway, that was why I'd like to see that recommendation on the list. We may not get to it for ten years, but, but that would be a, a good, a good use of this exercise. All right, that's all I had on the that that bit. Some, some additional explanation and just a little more thorough search. Okay, uh, that moves us to the, uh, cap recommendations, what we call this piece. Our protection plan recommendations. Do you want to tell us what you're up to there, Mr. Gurch?
Um. This is the next item? Is that over?
That's the next item on our agenda.
Okay.
We've kind of danced around it.
Um. So, um, basically I, I just looked into the cap, um, found the list of recommendations in the two different chapters. Um, threw the one in the table and removed the stuff from the city that was on the city's list and not on ours, which was like three items or something like that. Um, and then I added just the pages to the other. I think this is what you asked me to do. I, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we had talked, uh, in general about priority projects.
Yes.
Something like looking at, at railroad noise and then just this whole general thing of we, we keep winging out these ideas. Hey, let's look into this. So I think there's a more general assignment here, but no, this is, this is just exactly, I thought this was useful. I shouldn't speak for my comrades here to to, to, to list what it is that we, that we thought we ought to be doing. Um. And, and then what were you thinking? Next step, would we try to put some priorities to this? I know they, they did. I don't agree with all of their.
I mean, yeah, I think that would be a good, good start is just prioritaries. We, so the two different sections, like the one in the table, this is for the most part, the, the management strategies are what we're working on right now is like in our zoning um, stuff, other than there's a, a study at the end that talks about um, studying the efficacy of advanced treatments, but everything else is um, kind of in the regulatory realm. Um, and then the, the recommended additional city county investigations, these are basically, they prioritized what we should be looking at through additional studies and research. Um. But yeah, I mean, if, if there's any of these projects that we want to, um, focus on or seek funding for or, um, yeah, otherwise work on, then, then yeah, I mean, we can definitely do that. If there's any, if you see any like loaf hanging fruit in here, you know, just something that like, oh yeah, we could do this, you know? Let's, let's do something like that. Um. Yeah, really, it's just for discussion. I just put this together for you guys to discuss and we can come up with a plan if we want to.
Um, reaction to this table, comments on it, thoughts? I thought that one about work to determine incentives, grants and other financial opportunities would be my top priority. We've discussed that a lot. Um.
Yes.
I mean, that's just, just key, uh. And then, um, in several of these, it's suggested sent to WDEQ for review. Do, do we have a copy of that? What is it that got sent to WDEQ? I understand that's entirely on our plate, but.
Well, that was what you already looked at.
It was the last thing.
Yes, yeah, the regulation amendments. That's what I sent to them.
Okay, that's, I wasn't clear whether that had evolved any since, since we saw it last. And then what's the program there? Is that I think you indicated to me that you, you're trying to set up a meeting with them?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're trying to set up a meeting. Um, I, I think, um, the gentleman that we're trying to get a meeting with, Dennis Lewis, or at least have him gather the people. Um, he might be out of the office or something. We haven't heard any responses from him. And I've tried calling him and Lisa's tried emailing him, so. But yeah, we're trying to get something set up here in the next few weeks. So hopefully we'll get something together and have a meeting and figure some things out, so.
And the figure things out would be uh, potentially modification, delegation agreement, or at least an explicit DEQ embrace of the new regs. Is that, that's what?
Yeah, like, just say, are you good with this? Can we regulate this? You know, um, just really get their their blessing on, on what we're trying to do and or I guess not, and figure out what to do.
No, no, take our problem, you know, we need.
Yeah. Yeah. Or maybe there's something that we need to do before we can do that, you know, like maybe we do have to modify the, the delegation agreement or something before we can just modify our regulations like this, but.
Yeah, Brad Ellis is the other name that ought to hold around in there. He's the one that went together that conference.
Sure.
Sarah said I went to.
Um, we want to talk about nitrates and I, I mean, Lisa has a list of things she wants to talk about too and just.
Well, the, the whole enhanced treatment.
Exactly.
Is, like I said, worms, and I think it's terrific that she's dived into that.
Yeah.
Quite seriously, no, that she's a, she's a huge asset.
It'd be, it'd be amazing if, you know, DQ could be the ones that are vetting all the systems and then say, okay, these are the systems that are working and they're meeting these qualifications and then we have, have that list from the state, but, you know, we don't have that right now.
We heard that from all around the state in that conference that they would all love to see. We heard that from all around the state in that conference, that they would all love to see that. Everybody's just winging it. As far as the that next group, the recommended additional investigations, uh the the monitored well number four wouldn't be my top priority. I didn't see what the first three had to do. Those are city projects in the first place.
Sure.
Um and some of those are interesting science projects, but I'm not sure would pass muster as the essential doc for protection.
So, yeah, Mr. Turner, so um the city just provided a contract to Trihydro to do some monitoring well work. I'm not exac- exactly sure what that is, but I've been invited to be involved with that, so um. So hopefully, I mean, maybe this is within the scope of what they're doing and maybe we work together somehow to to do that, but like I said, I don't I don't know what the scope necessarily is um and what they're trying to get out of it, but I'll I'll be on that that committee. I think, well, I mean, I guess Trihydro has not been given the award yet, but um but that it's it's up for us. That was what the recommending committee is recommending, and council has to approve that, which I think they will maybe next week or something.
That that was my understanding is that they had finished the interview process. So yeah, Trihydro, they've gotten a number of proposals. And I would like to see the county keep an order in the water, and if I could be of assistance in that regard, I did propose on that. I don't I don't pursue any work in Albany County.
Right.
Uh and I'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay.
And I, yeah, sitting down with Jake, how are they gonna put that together? It was a qualification based RFP as I understood it, so they will be negotiating a contract and a scope and fee schedule.
Yeah, I was just, I was excited that they invited me to be a part of that so that we can I I we even have some money still that's associated with um the I eighty um study that we did years and years ago, but there's still some money from a special purpose tax that's that's earmarked for that that area and something that's has to do with that. Monitoring wells is in that that project, so if if there's somewhere we can plug in and and get, you know, some you know, help with this, um we'll we'll look to do that. Obviously, the the money thing, that's a board of county commissioners' decision, but um but we do, we still have some money, so I would I'd be happy to use that in something like this. Um before um Jay was was hired, Darren Parkin and I were were working with some things and with White Ot, and we planned on using some of it then, but um. Yeah, a lot of things happened. I think we started doing the cap update and some other things, and so that kind of got pushed back, but but hopefully now that we got this and the city's gone forward with with this this program they're looking at.
But then also smarter wells will almost certainly be outside the city in the county.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it's appropriate that we believe the county made data. So contact with that program.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, steer it.
David, even if it's just a placeholder, how about adding another line to this table of recommendations for land acquisition and conservation strategies?
Okay. I'm trying to think like what I took out, like, because there was some city stuff and I'm, land acquisition might have been part of what was recommended for them.
As that we could still have for us too.
No, absolutely, absolutely. I'm just, I was just trying to think back that may, that may be in there, but I may have taken that out. Okay, yeah, we could.
And and this one too, there were other recommendations sprinkled around that didn't make it into the specific table, so kind of same thing.
Sure, sure.
Make another sweep through just to see what's going on. I'd I'd identified a couple of things that that were in the cap that weren't. Well, like the one about uh, yeah, engineering to county, city and county engineering departments should provide design standards recommendations for the stormwater runoff uh control. Yeah, I can't remember what the other one was, but anyway, just a a sweep through the larger document for those kinds of regulations could be useful.
Okay.
I thought that uh, oh, I had a question there on on those research projects that were being done for research. Number five, delineating a hundred year floodplains within the cap, is that involved in the wetlands work that Ms. Erickson's doing for you? I know she has a big wetlands project going on.
No, I mean, she's she's just regulating things within our floodplains that are that the FEMA has already delineated.
Okay, so, okay, I just had my question there. I knew she spent a lot of time on that, so that that would extend to whatever the new delineations might be, all right. Okay, with all this, those are the only comments I had on that. Good a good effort, I think it's it's. Pull stuff together.
I had a question on one thing, or it says on on the left, it says require the use of advanced treatment units for new septic systems and for replacement septic systems. And it says that that is in the proposed wastewater rig sent to DEQ. And I thought that we took out the replacement.
Oh, yeah, you're right. That's that's correct. We, I mean, part of it's in there, but part of it's not, so.
Yeah.
Good, good catch. I had that same reaction. Yeah, I can update that. Okay, further thoughts on that? Good effort. During seeing done, we had one additional item on our agenda. We added, um this is the May sixth letter to the commissioners from Mr. Lewis. And my question was just maybe a reminder when we redid the subdivision regulations a couple of years ago, we we were trying to kind of get ahead of those chapter twenty-three studies. And and so that's what flagged in my mind as I read this. So are we going to, are we going to see something of a from the applicant before they send it to DEQ? I guess this says they already sent it to DEQ, but.
Is that in there?
I don't know what letter this is.
I I sent it to you. Oh, you don't know? I'm okay. I'm just, I'm this this inside joke between. That was funny. This was sent, well, I received a copy of it from Fisher Goss, and I thought he.
I see now, it's a small subdivision. No, it is not.
Oh, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not. Oh, yeah, I suppose it's like six or eight or five. So what is it saying there? Like, are we? Well, like.
Yeah, so um they're you're correct, they're supposed to be doing, put this study together for you guys to see before it goes to DEQ. They didn't do that. I don't know. So basically, what, we bring it to these guys and like, we we would just proceed as normal and they might have to send it back to DEQ.
Okay, so what, you guys will say their application is incomplete because it how how's this how's this gonna work? Have you seen an application for the subdivision?
Do we do we have a copy of the DEQ report?
We would, we need the study. We don't have the study that I that I remember. I mean, there's a, there's a whole lot of. There's a whole.
And eighteen-five something that like triggers the timeline within receipt of the DEQ applicant or DEQ review triggers um when decisions have to be made by.
And that's why we wanted to see it outside that timeline, right?
We didn't ask for it, though, so I don't like.
Oh, and technically, doesn't it say?
It's hard to, the county will.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, the applicants, they just, I mean, they'll sometimes send that to the to the state before they even come and talk to us. So it's like, it's hard for us to know when they're doing that, you know?
And they never told us, like, we did, it just, David got a letter sent to them.
Yeah, we had no clue that they had submitted it, so until we got the letter.
Okay, well, so I guess I'm just looking for some feedback on how this relates to that whole discussion we had when we redid preliminary plan.
Because you're right, that's how it's supposed to work. But.
Can I see the letter?
Yeah, I mean, what the letter says is simply that DEQ is taking an extra thirty days to do the review, but now we're hearing from staff, we didn't even know they were doing it already. And yet our small or or subdivision regulations require at the preliminary plan stage that they share that report with us.
Well, Matt, good luck tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, so I guess we're looking for some, well, not right on the spot, but it was a a thought or two, and how does this relate to what we thought our regulations were?
Yeah, we'll have the.
What happens next, and these guys getting demolished to do it by the regulator? What?
Yeah, we'll have to look into.
Maybe we're not even close to bringing it to you.
Yeah, I just procedurally, and I don't think we thought that through when we put that in the regulations. I think who knows what, why, and what goes where. But it was, the 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 problem was that once the full application comes to us, including the water waste for suitability study that DEQ has looked at, we're under a timeline, as we have to act within days or something. And and we thought we would like to have a little more time to work through that, and it had been precipitated by this group finding efficiencies in the in that study, which DEQ had said is fine with them. Now, previous incarnations of this commission have have just said, DEQ said it's okay, it's okay. We were unwilling to do that, and in fact, found things that that various of us, not just me on this commission, had thought were technically deficient. And it precipitated some loud words between us and applicant in one case, several cases. So we tried to cor- correct that by codifying our notions and regulations. All right, if there's nothing more to be said on that, you guys are gonna look into it?
Yep, we'll look into it, see what we can.
Um, all right, staff updates. Other, really, you guys could tell us about project status. Uh things are moving along. They passed the fencing regs and the sign regs.
Yeah, right. Yeah, the sign regs have been approved. Um it is what last meeting last last week, last week, so I don't think anything else, Joe? I don't think so.
Were there any any comments on any of those?
I think.
Um, said, did you listen to the?
I didn't hear anything.
So the sign regulations, we did have.
Okay, no, it's good science. Yeah, but no, Lamar spoke.
Yeah, Lamar's, um they had an attorney there as, well, an attorney, an intern from an attorney's for a law firm and a couple of their their management folks. Um, and they, I mean, they pointed out some things with like size uh limits and um talking about non-conforming uses and and you know, uh these regulations were gonna make them non-conforming, but ultimately, most of their science were non-conforming already, so like, the status wouldn't change. So, um, but but those were the kind of the issues that came up, so.
And then it was it was approved as we recommended it.
Yes, yes. Um and one of the things that was talked about too is that we would love to hear from them, um if if they would like to come to us and and discuss some of the changes that they'd like to see. They did bring up digital signs. And, you know, some other things or whatever. You know, open invitation, we gave them open invitation, the commission gave them an open invitation to come and discuss these things, and we'd be happy to take amendments, you know, bring amendments forward to you guys um for further discussion. For for Matt and for us, I think the most important thing was to just make sure they're constitutional, get that in place, which now we have. He feels comfortable with those. I feel comfortable with those. Um and now we can, if we need to make tweaks as we, you know, go along, because there's something that comes up or whatever, this is, we can definitely do that. Um and be happy to talk to Lamar. We invited them to come talk with us.
And it's a tone of that interaction was friendly, I would sort of say.
Yeah.
The quarry, at least.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, basically, the billboards were, man, just a time ago.
Right.
So a lot of people are operating on grandfather status.
Hmm, okay, yeah.
Anything else? Next meeting, July ten. Well, next meeting is our special meeting. Fairly short, we'll have some.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Chris Wilson, now we're to, oh, regular comments, I guess I skipped through the commissioner.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to um we, so we are clarified, we are working on breaking up the rural residential category.
Yeah.
I think that would be really, really valuable.
So, yeah.
Yeah, and also, um if we could kind of get, since they're gonna be looking at the Barnhart proposal, the the commissioners will be. Maybe we could try to get some game and fish comments, and that might be useful to them when they look at it. Since we are not the final word.
Okay, yeah, I can reach out to the fish and get regen to fish.
So those are my key comments.
Uh, good, good comment, even if if uh the applicant decides to withdraw and come back, we still would like to hear what game and fish has to say. So just in generally, we'd like to hear their comments on zoning changes. And they may not understand that distinction that we are increasingly educating ourselves to is that zoning change is kind of where all the action is, not really the subdivision so much, I mean, they need erosion soils and fencing requirements and things, but but where you've recast your your decisions at zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I guess just a little background, the last conversation I had with this this gentleman, and I don't know if he's still there or not, but um he was really questioning why we were sending stuff to them. It's like, well, we've been sending stuff to you, to your habitat folks for a long time. This is just part of our routine and and he he was upset and he was like, well, I don't know if we were gonna review this stuff and I don't know, so like, I don't know if that's still the same attitude of game and fish or or not, but like.
It shouldn't be, um, if you need.
Shocked, actually, but, yeah, yeah.
I can talk to them if needed.
And not, like, like I said, I don't know if this same gentleman, I don't even remember whose name was, is there or, I don't know. He was kind of upset, and I was like, I don't know what you're talking about. This is just our business, you know, we're trying to cooperate, make sure your interests are looked out for, it's just like ours, you know?
Well, if he thought it was just a little make-work project, la la la, then maybe he would be resistant, but he should be reassured that we are listening to what those guys said.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
At least this commission is certainly receptive. Okay, uh citizen comments, as usual, we've we've accommodated all citizen comments. Thank you all for your patience. We have some data objections. We are adjourned. Thank you.